Good to go.
Good to go.
Right, can we have the introduction of our translator?
Yes, there tonight we have Diego.
Yes, hi, everyone. Good evening, I'm Diego Pons here today on behalf of the Community Language Cooperative with my colleague, Giuseppe Escobedo. So thanks as always for having us at your meeting. The organizers of this meeting have made a commitment towards language justice. As always, this means that we're here to help create a space for people to participate and engage in the language of their heart, which is just simply the language that you feel most comfortable in. So we use simultaneous interpretation in English and Spanish to help create the space today here on Zoom. Once I finish saying the statement in English, I'll repeat it in Spanish. At that moment, when turn interpretation, once interpretation is turned on, you will be able to see a globe icon. Interpretation there in the bottom right hand corner of your computer screen. Please select that globe icon when it appears and please select to prefer language. If you happen to be joining today's meeting on yourself on your tablet, however, I'll ask you to please look for the more button or the three dots button in order to select to prefer language that way. So if you're not fully bilingual, I'll encourage you to please select to prefer language. So you may utilize the interpretation in case anyone were to speak in the opposite language. But if you are bilingual, you can just feel free to listen to everyone in their original language. And you will not have to select any language channel and you will not have to hear our voices. As always, when you select your language, you can check new original audio. So you don't have to be hearing both languages at the same time. And as always, we like to encourage people to please speak at a conversational level and pace. Thank you. Buenos dias a todos y todas, mi nombre es Diego Pons. Yo estoy aquí de parte de la Cooperativa Comunitaria de la Justicia de Lenguaje con mi colega Giuseppe Escobedo. Gracias por invitarnos hoy a esta reunión. Hoy los organizadores de esta reunión han comprometido a servir la justicia al lenguaje. Como siempre, lo que eso significa es que queremos crear un espacio para que todas las personas puedan participar e involucrarse en el idioma a su corazón, que es simplemente el idioma en el que todas las personas se sientan más cómodas. Hoy vamos a utilizar la interpretación simultánea para poder crear ese espacio aquí en Zoom en inglés y en español. Cuando yo terminé decir esto, vamos a activar la interpretación. Cuando la interpretación está activada, usted va por observar un ícono de un globo terráqueo que era interpretación ahí abajo en la derecha de su pantalla. Por favor, seleccione ese icono del globo terráqueo cuando aparezca en su pantalla y por favor, seleccione el idioma preferido. Si usted está asistiendo a esta reunión en su celular o en su tableta, por favor, busque la opción que dice more, que quiere decir más, o el botón de tres puntos para que usted pueda seleccionar su idioma preferido de esa manera. Si usted no es completamente bilingüe, yo voy a pedir que, por favor, seleccione su idioma preferido para que usted pueda utilizar interpretación cuando la gente esté hablando en el otro idioma. Pero si usted sí es bilingüe, se puede sentir libre hoy de escuchar a todos en idioma original. Ya tenía que seleccionar ningún canal de idioma y no tienen que escuchar nuestras voces jamás. Como siempre, cuando usted selecciona su idioma, puede hacer clic en silenciar el audio original para no escuchar ambos idiomas al mismo tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Diego. I'm going to start, as I do with the city councils, with a land acknowledgement. This is my statement, it does not reflect the statement of all of council or other individual counselors. For thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the Nju, Tenay, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcefully removed from their ancestral lands by the US government. It is therefore important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective without recognition of those who came before, became before us and who to this day continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in acknowledging this legacy. Have we turned off? Okay, all right. I do need to, before we go into conflict of interest, I do need to ask if council would mind, because later, after public participation, we are scheduled to go into executive session. And I'm wondering if we could do the proclamation prior to going into executive session. Is there support for that change to the agenda?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So the next is any identification of actual or perceived conflict of interest, counselors? Okay. Then we will go into public participation. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony, or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to the council. As this is a hybrid meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. All written comments received by the city clerk by noon today have been delivered to council and will be summarized in meeting minutes. When I call you up to the podium to speak, we'll ask you to state your name and if you are a resident of the city or the county or elsewhere. And then on the screen, there will be three minutes, a three minute timer. And we will hold folks to the three minutes, and I apologize if I have to interrupt you, but keep your eye on that timer, because that is the time that's allowed. So first on our agenda is Mr. Dan Lauria. Maybe known to some of you. Yes, please come up to the agenda. Oh, yes, up to the microphone there, yeah. Thank you, sorry, come up to the agenda.
I don't really need a mic, I think you, you might over there.
Is it not, are you not able to hear me?
Oh, okay, now we had a hard time, so.
Okay.
I think they just fixed it. But I am one of the co-founders of the Durango Play Fest, which means I was conned into this by some of Durango's most notorious desperados. And seven years ago, Wendy Malik and I came and did the play to guys to raise money for the firemen, local fire department. And it was so successful, I blurted out that what a great place for a writer's community, for a play fest where writers work on new plays. And naturally, Terry Bacon, Barbara Fritz, Christina. Well, we're in our fifth year and we develop new plays. Now, I gotta tell you, it is very hard for me to get celebrities to come to Durango. But it is twice as hard to get them not to want to come back again. So they're all on my neck. Everybody loves this place. It is the ideal place to create. So this year, we're doing four new plays. One of them I wrote, and I'm still getting hell from that for that, taking up one of the slots by my fellow writers. And it's with Jody Long, who is the president of SAG Hollywood, the largest branch of our actors' union. And we have Shrinking Shrinking World by Rick Dresser, a very well-known play. Right, it was a perfect example of what I mean. He came here once. He insisted on coming back again. And he was hired to teach for a semester at Fort Lewis College. If I didn't call him back, he'd probably have five guys named Nunzi looking for me right now, so. We have The Agency by Leah Romeo, who wrote the play we did last year, and wrote Sitting and Talking, which was very popular. And Blossom Johnson, who's a Native American, who wrote a play, The Monster Slayer, and we have four Native American actors in it. It's a very interesting play. So we still have tickets there. And most of all, I want to thank all of you for the marketing grant, which means I will never get out of this. I will be here every year and we'll be developing new plays. And pretty soon we'll get, if it wasn't for COVID, I know for a fact, we would have had two plays done off Broadway in New York. They're still optioned. So if we ever get through this, Durango's name will be right there on Off Broadway. I cannot thank you enough for your commitment to the developing of new writers. And that's what you do. Everything else is on your phone, except the arts. You cannot teach somebody to paint by looking at a phone. You can't teach somebody to write by looking at a phone. Can't teach someone how to play an instrument by looking at that phone. So thank you all. Thank you for your commitment, appreciate it.
Dan, thank you. Next, we have Sweetie Marbury.
My name is Sweetie Marbury, and yes, I am a resident. I've been here for almost 50 years. I came here tonight to protest any elimination of parking spaces or lane changes on Main Street. The disruption would cause small businesses significant financial harm. Leave it alone, is my opinion. 2020 was a financial disaster for small businesses in Durango. 2021 was busy, but yet still small businesses closed and many struggled to stay alive by closing at least one day during the week. Now it's 2022. We have supply chain problems and employee shortages. Businesses have narrow margins to operate, and this city council wants to add more disruptions. Their proposed changes will have unintended consequences. For example, employees will have to be, will have to park on East Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth. Locals will avoid the downtown and go somewhere else. Visitors will struggle with parking, and the disabled will not be coming to downtown. I haven't heard how much money it's going to cost. I haven't heard how long the construction would cost, would take. And I haven't heard how will you pay for it. Small businesses are the lifeblood of Durango. Does this council really want to alienate businesses who provide jobs and add sales tax to the budgets? None of you own a business on Main Street. You don't get it. My family owns a business on Main Street. Your proposal is devastating to us. Council Buell, you should understand exactly what I'm saying as a business owner. Leave it alone. Tearing up Main Street and eliminating parking spaces will be the death for some retail and some restaurants. Why would you do that? What happened to the parking fund money? Build a garage to solve the parking issues. Use federal months, federal funds and grants to accomplish that. If this city council acts and goes forward by hurting the downtown, that will be your lasting legacy. One more disruption to small businesses is just wrong. Thank you.
Thanks. For the, for the first meeting, our first meeting, our letter, Sharon Rosser? Sharon Taylor? Oh, Sharon Taylor.
And you, the nice ending after her. So I'm Sharon Taylor, and I own Tippy Canoe in 925 Maine. I've been at this location for 15 years and done business in Durango for the past 30 years. I relocated here because we love Durango. I did that 30 years ago. My customers love Durango as well as just the way, the way it is. And they are very frustrated with the parking issues and the changes to make, to make Durango look like another Boulder, Denver, and all those other areas. We have a unique town with charm and character that stands above all other towns in Durango or in Colorado, which is why we are ranked number one to travel to in a lot of the magazines. The new concept takes away from the charm of Durango, along with the parking. That's taken away, it's adding more work for the city. The city took two and a half years to replace a tree outside me and Dranglers. In that meantime, they just let it be a dangerous hazard. I had customers trip in it, they were 70, 75 years old. They're lucky they didn't get sued over this whole thing. So they've showed they can handle that, they can't take care of the trees. Meanwhile, people, you know, they fell in the hole, then offered to pay for that tree too. Parking for my customers is a serious issue, a lot of them are older, they cannot walk a long distance. The new three lane configuration developed for the bump outs does slow traffic down and it widens the lanes, which is nice. But it's not, does not create constant, it does create a constant congestion outside my store along with taking away valuable parking. Customers do not min, customers do not mind stepping aside on sidewalks to let people go by with the bistro's when they're next to the buildings. I spoke to the majority of the merchants of downtown, and none of us are in favor of the new concept. And, and they just want Durango to stay as it is. The biggest phrase I hear is why fix what's not broken? Finally, I know change for the future is what the city wants to happen. But are they doing this at the cost of putting businesses out of business with the construction and the vagrants coming back and enjoying the additional areas for them to hang and trash? I write them off on a regular basis, we fought this for years, we finally have it under control. And you're just going to add to us fighting it again and then coming back in swarms. So the question is, do you want a beautiful downtown like we have now? And you can add to it with more flowers, minimal damage to the charm it offers. It offers to our customers and our locals right now, it looks like a circus. Or do you want another cookie cutter town which will hurt many businesses in the process along with running more locals away? They don't come to town now because they can't find parking. So that's where I stand on it. We just need to fix, just leave town the way it is. I've talked to the merchants. They don't want it, it's going to hurt our businesses, it'll put businesses out. So you need to talk to the merchants. No one's talking to us and what, how it's going to affect us as individuals and our businesses and employees we do. The parking issue is a major thing, you need to get that under control. So, thank you.
Thank you. Regan Briggs? Is there no Reagan, Reagan Briggs? On Spring Street? Okay. Jesse Ogilvy?
I'm the co-founder of I Am Music. We're at 1350 Mainz, we're just at the very end of the parking, where all the parking starts. And I have a couple things I just want to discuss. One is for us, we have tons of people that are like just entering Camino del Rio, coming off Main right there. And when it was two lane traffic, we would, we've almost been hit by cars multiple times. So I'm in favor of some sort of way to slow down the traffic, so they stop barreling in there like 35 miles an hour. So the, uh, once we did close the lanes to one, it was so much better. Again, we're at the end of Mainz, so it's a little bit different than someone who's like, once the traffic's already slowed with stoplights. So that's a little bit of feedback for you guys there on the very north end of Mainz. And then some feedback for the lodger's tax grant, which we're super thankful for the money that's coming from the marketing grant and the lodger's tax grant and the crates grant. Those are all awesome and we are happy to take advantage of those. And they're really helping us grow and sustain arts in the community. I do think that, um, when we're looking at how those, the lodger's tax money is allocated and how it's selected, I'm wondering if we're giving enough, uh, you know, preface or like taking consideration. People are doing like events for the last eight or nine years, and we're trying to sustain our money and just maybe taking consideration, people who have sustained events throughout the pandemic and all that stuff and kept going. And, um, and I noticed a couple of the meetings with the crates grant even, um, that, uh, oh, this, this event is underfunded. It has no funding, we'll fund it fully rather than like a bat, ours that already has funding and we're, we're competing, you know, directly with events that don't have funding and they're getting as much funding as we are. So I think it's something we're taking consideration when people are, you know, just going through all these years and sustaining, um, the economic community in town through the arts and culture, and that's what we're driving. But I'm really grateful for what the city is doing. I just think that if we could take a closer look at, um, given how the funds are allocated. And as far as parking goes, and as far as artists and culture goes, I think it's better for, um, for us to slow down traffic and have people take time to get through the area so they can kind of experience the town, at least what it has to offer in that facet, not, not from a sales point, but more from that creating the culture and allowing for musicians and stuff to, you know, play to tourists and pick up and, and, you know, start creating that economic driver. But it is always a problem for us to unload gear and music musicians. And we need to make sure that it, for parking, that we're having enough spaces to allow for people to unload and get their gear out and stuff like that. So that's just from our perspective as musicians.
Thank you. David Woodruff?
My name is Dave Woodruff, I am a city resident, you can call my mustache Ed. Hello, city councilors, thank you for giving us all the opportunity to voice community opinion in a variety of matters relevant to Durango. Today, I'm standing before you as the president of the Durango chapter of the Colorado Restaurant Association. Our board would like to lend our support behind the downtown's next step project that will improve and revitalize downtown Durango. Our board has been a part of the robust stakeholder process in collecting information, community feedback, business owner and operator input, and building owner input. We have seen that the city has put forth a dedicated effort to elicit community appetite for such an endeavor. And I can speak for my organization that we fully support the project and anxiously await the final plans. As I'm sure you've heard many opinions on this, we want to ensure that the loudest voices in the room, even if in the minority, don't shout down the majority. There are some folks that are concerned with the loss of the less than 1% of the available meter parking spaces downtown. We would encourage the city to look into a parking structure that could offset this loss and potentially open up and potentially open up downtown. A parking structure has been in both public and private conversations since I have moved here in 2005. The good news is, is that there seem to be a few spots downtown that we could potentially put a structure on or into. I look forward to those conversations and how we can make that a reality as a part of this revitalization of downtown. Other dissension comes from, uh, the form of how it will be paid for and how much will be on the backs of citizens of Durango. Grant money is a great way to pay for some of those costs to mitigate the cost paid by taxpayers. We are wholly confident that city staff is looking hard at grant funding for this project to offset the cost burden. We can look to Glenwood Springs for a blueprint on how they were able to help fund their Seventh Street Construction, Construction Project with two grants from both Gargville County and the state of Colorado to the tune of $800,000 or 33% of the total cost of the project. I think we can all agree that we enjoy the silver lining that came out of the pandemic and how we think about our community in our downtown. It forced our hand to come up with ideas on how to reimagine our space in the name of public health and safety. We are coming out of the pandemic, as we are coming out of the pandemic, we can capitalize on those fresh ideas to create a downtown that is welcoming to both locals and tourists alike, well positioned to handle events and potentially showcase how vibrant our community is through art and culture. We have an opportunity to do something really great that can have impacts, not just for us, but to cement a legacy for others to enjoy downtown and make it more of an idea of what all it has to offer. We firmly believe that this project will make downtown more of a destination for everyone and inherently boost sales tax revenue generation, particularly in off-peak seasons. We feel it's short-sighted to look at the short-term impacts and not the long-term benefit. What I think we all don't want to see is letting the fear of the unknown steer the ship in operational envisioning decisions. The pandemic taught us to be bold, to try something new. Let's listen to that voice and do something amazing that will continue to build our community in the years to come. Thank you again for your time, and we look forward to continued partnership and projects relevant to our community.
Thank you. Antonia Clark, please.
So I have these, um, I submitted a petition a couple of months ago or a month ago with people.
Can, can, Antonia, can you go to the microphone?
From business people on Main Street, and I put them in a spreadsheet to make them easier to read. Do you mind if I pass them out to the counselors?
Go ahead.
Took some deciphering, I can't verify the spelling on everybody's name. So my name is Antonia Clark, I live at 589 County Road 220 in Durango. My family and I own Toiton Gallery in the parking lot across the street. We're, we're very grateful for that parking lot, and we've been in business there for 40 years. I'm here representing myself and the 75 business owners and managers who signed the lender I sent you a few weeks ago. I've typed those names into a spreadsheet to make it easier for you to read and recognize those names. These 75 people include Ted Hermisman, who owns the main mall, Tori Osalo, who, who manages the Strater Hotel, Amy Jackson, who manages Jackson and Jackson, basically owns Rio Grandland, a lot of restaurateurs, a lot of retailers, and a number of just small businesses. Interestingly, I couldn't get the retailers, the bankers, or the architects to sign this, not because they disagreed with it, because they were afraid of retribution. These people are deeply concerned about the negative effects and the implementation of next steps will have on their businesses and, whoops, will have on their businesses, and they feel like their concerns have fallen on deaf ears. As Sharon Taylor said, no one is talking to the merchants. For example, the plan has two flexible slash festival blocks where, which are presumably to accommodate street closures and festivals on Main Avenue. We discovered many, many years ago that festivals and street closures destroy retail businesses for the day. We convinced the city to limit those to four or five per year. It's worked out great, a lot of them have moved up to Second Avenue, which has worked out great. So now we're going to have two of those in front of all these businesses. If you look at the, at the 900 block and the 1000 block, you'll see how many people oppose this plan. The consultants asked the general public, where do you think these festival blocks should go? Did they talk, did they walk up and down the street and ask the businesses? How do you feel about street closures in front of your business multiple times a year? No, and I think that's shameful and disrespectful. The majority of us feel that the question, should we leave historic downtown, basically the same, should have been asked and it never was. So it seems to me that the city, to me and others, that the city is determined to make a big change, but why? Sarah Hill told me that the city has charged her with making Durango, downtown Durango safer. But if you look at the public records that the police department provides, there have been, since January of 2018, three pedestrian vehicle encounters in downtown Durango. That's three in 1680 days, zero cyclist pedestrian vehicle encounters in 1680 days. Main is a straight, straight, is a safe place.
Thank you, Antonia.
I'm sorry?
I, I need to let you know your time is up.
Okay, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
If anybody wants to talk about this, I'm all ears.
John Mahoney, please.
Good evening, John Mahoney, I am a city resident. The next steps is an idea the city should be talking about, because what you do is think of ways to make Durango better. However, in this case, you're proposing to spend millions of dollars to fix something that's not broken. And, and we wonder why. There's enormous negatives from this, just mentioning the bulbouts alone. The problem with the bulbouts is that it's going to ruin our Western Victorian historic heritage. And that's very important. Think of Santa Fe and Telluride. These are two cities which are world famous. And why are they world famous? Because they both discovered a long time ago that they had something that they needed to preserve. Santa Fe started zoning in the early part of last century. Telluride, about 40 years ago, some enlightened citizens said, we've got to keep this. And what do they have? They both have wonderful cities that people visit all around the world. In addition to those negatives, that negative, snow removal is going to be harder. There's going to be a loss of parking. The loading zones on the end of the streets are going to have to go away. Bus parking, which is very important to us, is going to be very difficult. And there's going to be more surface area and to clean. And the city doesn't even now have a daily downtown cleaning program. The only positive I've heard is that the bulbouts, when you're on a bulbout, it's shorter distance that you're walking in the roadway and therefore it's safer. However, in the last 10 years, there's only been 16 pedestrian injuries and zero deaths. And so downtown's already safe. And when I moved here, I think the downtown speed limit might have been 35 miles an hour, then it went to 25, now it's 15. So even if there was an issue, it's already been mitigated. And so I don't, I don't see what we're gaining. A parking garage of 400 spaces used to cost about 26,000 per space. For 400 spaces, that's about 10 and a half million. And I'm sure the cost has gone up now. But if you were to not do the next steps, which might cost four or five million, you're already halfway there to get a parking garage. And a parking garage has enormous, oh, I'm almost out of time, has enormous advantages. People perceive in the rural areas here that you can't park downtown. I know you can, but they perceive you can't. And tourists like parking garages because they can park their car, wander, walk around, spend money. They don't have to worry about the meter running out. Also, the city is going to paint itself into a corner soon, because all the employees park up in the grid. And when are these residents going to ask for, thank you, I'll finish up. When are these residents going to ask for residential parking passes? Where are those employees going to go?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Frank?
Hi, my name is Donna Frank. I have an art gallery called The Shared Blanket adjacent to the train. I hadn't intended to say this, but there's a new giant hole just uphill from us where a motel apparently is never going to be. It might be a really good place for a parking garage because it's already dug. We call it the swimming pool. I don't know if you're aware of that hole. Anyway, I've had a business on Main for 40 years. My customers come back year after year after year. They love Durango. It's quaint. They love the Victorian nature. They feel safe. We had a problem for a while with street people that had quite an impact on older people coming to visit. They felt unsafe for the first time. We removed all the parking benches and everything and made it uncomfortable for people to loiter on Main. And I hear in this plan, the idea to create a space that's going to bring them back. Mind-boggling to me. I love where I am because I have my own parking lot. My customers have a place to park, so I don't hear as much noise about parking probably as most people. In 2017, we had a good year. 2018, we had a fire. In 2019, everybody else had a fire. 2020, we had COVID. 2021, people began to come back. We're just beginning to get our tourists back. The worst thing you could possibly do now is interfere with businesses. I think the number is 44 businesses that have folded between the fire and COVID on Main because of inability to keep a business open without traffic. We also have 48 parks in our county. Main Avenue does not need to be a park. It's ridiculous. It's a business district. Traffic is supposed to flow. We don't want traffic stopping. We don't need buses on Main. We don't need bicycles on Main. The streets are perfect for that, but that one avenue, we need to let traffic flow. Years ago, we managed to convince the city council to move the art fest up to Second Avenue, which was a tremendous boon for them. It's been successful up there every year, and everybody on Main is still open while that's going on. My business was originally the 800 block, then the 700 block, which burned down, and now I'm down by the train. I just hope that you will pay attention. My customers say that they're all sending you emails, telling you why they come to Durango, why do we need to preserve this quaintness, why we don't need to look like any place else. It's this unique, friendly, welcoming town that they come to see. Oh, I have a little more time. I'm not very good at this, but I just hope you understand that those of us that have had businesses on Main for 30 or 40 years have already been through all these issues. We lost a tremendous amount of business when they put that ridiculous traffic light on Cowage in Main. Everybody went out of business on that corner. Everybody lost their jobs on that corner, and then they ended up taking that stupid traffic light down.
Thank you. No, I want to give you a chance to finish, but I recognize that your time is up.
I just, I remember Tim saying to me, "Wait till you see how much business you gain when people can cross diagonally."
Thank you. Thank you. Kathy Barrett?
Good evening. I think I need to adjust this a little. My name's Kathy Barrett. I live in the county, 340 Ridge Road, and I have some words to share. As a person from anti-racist, anti-war feminist and free speech days, I want to engage and enlighten the fight for democracy. Democracy is threatened on many levels. Examples are the Republican Party thinks they can gerrymander every election through the back door, and the Supreme Court has eliminated a woman's right to choose. We need to advance democracy on every level, from local to national. In our democracy, the words abolish and abolition should not be foul words. The 19th century abolitionist movement to end slavery is a historical accomplishment of democracy. We should establish, we should abolish, excuse me, white supremacy and those methods that govern its practices. Stand up for diversity, inclusivity, and equity. Support the First Amendment and universal human rights. I hope that the city council, which established the Human Relations Commission and will continue to support its work.
Thank you. Thank you. You have Jennifer Latham?
My name is Jennifer Latham. I'm a city resident, and I have been a member of the Community Relations Commission for two years now. I am speaking to Agenda Item 13.4, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Temporarily Discontinuing Meetings of the Community Relations Commission. With my emphasis here, while the city council discusses and determines the future of boards and commissions, my question is, why is the CRC being singled out? Is it because of outspokenness? Is council planning to temporarily discontinue meetings of other advisory boards and commissions as it discusses and determines the future of these boards and commissions? Or is this potential action meant only to interrupt the community-affirming work of the CRC? As you consider this item, I urge you to think about whether it is an equitable practice in alignment with the city's 2022 strategic plan goal of diversity, equity, and inclusion, in particular, quote, "Foster strong partnerships and engagement with community groups." The Community Relations Commission, under the leadership of Chair Tears the Camacho, has continued to do this in an ongoing capacity, in particular through creation of subcommittees representing the Latinx, Indigenous, and disabled communities and residents. This past week alone, I've had the pleasure of attending a Disability Pride picnic and Spanish Movie in the Park events, both of which involve many hours of planning and preparation on the part of some of these subcommittee members. To see the joy and community of those attending these inclusive events is what makes this work so rewarding and right. To discontinue meetings of the CRC even temporarily would be a grave disservice to our community. In my opinion, any vote to do so will be a clear case of power, privilege, and oppression at work with the intention to silence voices of this commission and detract from the stated purpose of the CRC to promote respect and acceptance for diversity within the city. I have a minute left, so I believe you all received a copy of the chair's report for the past year of the accomplishments and work that the Community Relations Commission has done, including thank you for this wonderful language justice that is provided so that bilingual and monolingual residents can participate in our city meetings. We have made recommendations, and it's happened for all gender signage for the restrooms at the rec center. There's been menstrual equity with free menstrual products available there now, and those are just a couple of examples. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bob Griffin?
I think you all know why I'm here. I guess I didn't realize when I signed in I was supposed to talk. I learned, don't sign your name until you find out what you're doing. But I think you all know why I'm here. I'm concerned with the direction that council is taking with the next step downtown Main Street. I live in the county, but I have property in downtown Durango, and I'm very concerned about the fact that, you know, we've, for 50 years that I know of, we've studied parking, and we've identified, I can't tell you how many studies we've done or how much money we spent on parking studies. We're doing another one right now, I know. But we've identified a need for a parking structure that's been ignored for at least 50 years. We had a fund that Sweetie referenced, you know, where we had in lieu a parking fee, those monies were to be used for a parking structure. We wonder where that fund is, where it was spent. Why haven't we made any progress? We're concerned about the fact that we just, you know, after you guys sent out a survey that we felt was kind of intrinsically biased and flawed, in the fact that one of the options out of the four was to leave Durango alone, leave Main Street the way it is. We've worked at it for a long time, trying to make it the way it is now. Why are we set on changing? You know, when I, we took two days after you guys got a thousand and some signatures that said, "Yeah, you know, we like putting bulbouts or bumpouts or whatever kind of out on Main Street." You know, we decided, well, let's take a couple of days and go down and talk to business owners and, you know, people that have been here for 30 or 40 years on the street and see what they think. And I can tell you, I personally approached over 40 merchants, either owners or managers of business, not clerks, either owners or managers, over 40 of them in the 800 block alone. And one of them did not sign that petition, asking you to step back and ask yourselves, "Why are we spending potentially millions of dollars to change Main that we don't feel is broken?" So, you know, here I am, asking you again, take a look at it. Look at what we've done in the past. Look at what the merchants and the property owners are asking you to do, and please give us, you know, serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Enrique. Does not have a last name. It's fine.
My name's Enrique, by the way. It's a Spanish name. So I am part of the CRC, along with these other amazing members that are present today. And what we're witnessing here is the perpetuation of white supremacy again. The words abolish ICE should be something that's supported, especially in a community when we're talking about money, where our undocumented and documented immigrants are one of the backbones of our businesses. They clean our streets, they cook for us, they allow us to enjoy our weekends and our days. When I have abolish ICE on my background, it's because that's my work, that's my life. My parents are immigrants. They were persecuted. They had to run from factory jobs. When we have white power holders trying to silence people of color, you are perpetuating white supremacy. We have one mayor who used to sit on the front line with us in 2019, before I was picked up by the Department of Homeland Security, who assumed as she gained power, decided to flip the script and become very centrist. You say you're not a politician, but you're playing a politician's game. In this town, to be a person of color is very hard. Remember, Durango's 89.6% white. To be a person of color means you are floating in white spaces where your voices are never heard. We have community members here that finally have a platform through the CRC to speak about their problems, and as a result, we have created positive change. Thank you, Sarah Hill, for listening to our Latinx Subcommittee, and now we have a bus route back on 160 that has now servants in an underrepresented community. We fought for language justice, and let me say, we fought for language justice, and now we have dozens of our community members who speak Spanish online listening to this. These are accomplishments that should be celebrated, and what you're doing is trying to silence us again. There's 11 commissions. Why is the CRC the only one being silenced or talked about being silenced? Let me guess, we have two Native American voices, we have two Latinx community members in it, and we have the epitome of what is a white ally. Because we're strong voices, because we're leaders in our community, it scares you. It scares you that we're agitating your comfortable white bubble, and it's time that you recognize that we will not let that happen. So whatever you decide tonight is very important for the future of how this is going to go. Take that how you will. I will not be silenced. I will not stop my work. This is in my blood. And as you sit there uncomfortable, Jessica, know that I'm talking to you too. So be advised, we will keep our voices loud. We continue, we'll be proud. We will continue to cause change, positive change for our community members, whether you like it or not.
Dee DeHara Brown?
I'm Dee DeHaro Brown, and I'm a city resident. And I'm here this evening to comment on the ill-conceived idea of pausing the Community Relations Commission. Since most of you weren't around when the CRC was first formed, I think you should be aware that it came from the community. Many of us in the community worked very hard on the idea of establishing the CRC, and we presented it to the city. And after a lot of hard work by members of the community, it was approved. So for you as my elected representatives to now be considering pausing or abolishing it is highly offensive to me as a community member who worked hard to get it in the first place. The CRC is composed of volunteers. They don't get paid, and they're doing good work in Durango. Just a few of the things that they've done recently are, they worked on the new bus route, the Spanish movies in the park, the translation services, they've worked with Southwest Center of Independence and established gender neutral restrooms. Those are just a few things they've done recently. They are equity advocates, working with the marginalized populations in Durango. And this is not easy work. It's hard work, and sometimes it's very uncomfortable. And so we just have to deal with that if we're going to make our community more inclusive as we should. And I would just like to reiterate that there are 11 city boards or commissions in Durango, yet the CRC is the only one that's being singled out for pausing. And it's the only board or commission that I know of in the city that is composed predominantly of people of color. So I think it reeks of discrimination, and that is not a good look for the city of Durango. I'm opposed to the pausing of the CRC, and I think we should all move forward and support the work that the CRC is doing. I'm sick and tired of going backwards, so let's go forwards. Thank you.
Beau or Jenna Black?
My name is Beau Black. I own a business on College and Second, and wasn't prepared, but I'm 100% all for the Next Step program downtown. I think it's moving in the right direction to revitalize downtown, make it more pedestrian-friendly. I hear a lot of, a few businesses that are opposed to it, and one thing I got to say is being, having a business on Second Avenue, if it doesn't work out on Main Street, bring it up to Second Ave, because it would be a great place for it. I think it would show that we can leave Main Street in the dust if that's how they feel, because I just think it's ridiculous that we have a couple of people that are making a big stink about it going in, and their business isn't even on Main Street. So that's my two cents right there. If you have any questions for me, bookcase, stop on by, say hi. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Silatani?
Hi, I'm Melissa.
Hi, I'm Melissa Silatani. I live in Durango. I moved here two years ago for work, and I've really tried to get to know people in the community. And I'm really concerned with the council trying to stop the CRC. It seems like they're the only committee, commission in the city that's doing any form of DEI work. And the fact that a town that's mainly white is trying to cancel them out is really problematic. I signed up for city emails to get notifications whenever there's meetings, and the CRC is the only email I do not get. The last time I got one, it was 10 minutes after the meeting already started. So it's super problematic that everyone's trying to stop this committee from happening when they're doing really good work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Olivia DePablo Lopez.
Buenas noches a todos. Voy a empezar a hablar en español para honrar mi lenguaje y también porque quiero que la gente que está escuchando nos online sepa lo que estoy diciendo. Y también quiero preguntarles aquí a esta mesa, alguien me entendió? Anybody understood what I said?
Yeah, I do have a translator.
I get that, and thank you for responding. But my point that I'm trying to make is that on the other side of the monitor, there is people listening that don't speak English. And I think that in itself illustrates how powerful the CRC has been in evolving and involving community members that oftentimes are marginalized and voiceless. And I'm standing right here with a lot of love and respect to everybody, every other human being here, to try to request, first, I want to say thank you. Thank you to the members of the CRC, because we have made a lot of progress. I'm a member of the CRC as well. Thank you to the city council, because you have listened to our requests and make things happen and make progress. Thank you to those voices that have come forward and create change, because it's not me, it's not Enrique, it's not Tirza, it's not Jennifer. It's the people, the people that live here, the people that oftentimes help support it for you, and the people that care to promote social justice and justice. I've lived here for 30 years, and all of the work that I tried to do is just trying to build and promote and pitching towards equality and building healthier communities. I want to ask you, city councils, how it was decided to even think about ceasing or stopping these meetings? And if your process is legit, and if that's what you intend to do, I personally, that I have provided you two and a half years of my life, and to this community 30 years, I want to know, why are you doing this? And why do I have personally, Olivia, speaking for myself, to be singled out? And then why all my colleagues also need to be singled out? I have utter respect for all of you, and I want to continue to collaborate. We have seen the return of the route, we have seen language justice, we have seen so much more involvement in people at the newspaper with the website. You remember the first page, this is the first time I've said a Mexican lady, that I feel that I'm valuable in this community. We all deserve that. And I pledge for you to keep promoting justice, because that's why we trust you. Thank you.
I'm just going to say that this will be a topic later today, and we will be discussing it. And there is a rationale for bringing this topic, this conversation to the discussion. So I'll be doing that during, we'll be doing that during the session, not during public comment. I'm just saying that this will be coming. So has, I think we've gotten everyone? Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you so much. Is there public comment from the virtual?
Yes, Mayor, there is. We have three people who'd like to speak, the first of which is Monique DeGiorgio. I'm gonna let her in right now.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Monique DeGiorgio. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm a city resident, and really apologize I'm not there in person. I appreciate you taking this comment over Zoom. I am commenting today as co-owner of Table to Farm Compost. Our mission is to recycle food waste into compost and save the planet. We take that pretty seriously. We're up to 600 customers here, both in the city and county. Keeping food scraps out of landfill reduces methane, and it creates compost that we are providing to area farms to sequester carbon. We're currently diverting about 1,200 tons a year, and that's sequestering 800 metric tons of carbon dioxide. Tonight, I wanted to provide some comment on the council's discussion about how to utilize the excess of lodgers' tax. Wanted to support the idea that the council is considering, and that sounds like it was recommended by staff, of a utility bill credit. We were hoping that you might consider the idea of a utility bill credit that could be sustainable in mind, a way to credit the citizens of Durango specifically for recycling. A credit of this nature would be part of the original intent of the lodgers' tax, which was to allocate funding towards sustainable tourism. As locals, we bear the burden and benefit, of course, that tourism brings by supporting local recycling with the lodgers' fund excess. It's a great way to meet that original intent and to work on combating climate change and the environmental crisis that we're in. Sustainability utility bill credit could open doors for us to work together in the future. You may be aware that we have a public-private partnership with the city of Durango. The goal of that partnership is to have citywide composting by 2024. If we achieved that, we would be sequestering 4,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide a year. That is equivalent to a $15 million plant that's being proposed in Iceland that would sequester a similar amount. Also wanted to let you know that we received a grant in the last few weeks from the state of Colorado to do a market study here in Durango. We will be providing compost service for three months for 600 city residents. We want to tell you more about that study when it's done. We're looking at the things that keep people from composting, whether it's behavior, price point, equity inclusion that's being talked about tonight. And so we'll be able to tell you more about how we can achieve citywide composting. We're also working with Visit Durango on testing compostable packaging and looking at ways that our facility can work on breaking down that compostable packaging that many of our businesses in town are using. So to summarize, wanted to support the discussion tonight that you will have about potentially having a sustainability credit on the utility bill for that access in the lodgers' fund. And I really appreciate all of your work and your leadership in this community and the time to talk tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next person who's raised their hand?
Yes, next we have the Southwest Center for Independence. And I will put them through right now.
Please state your name.
Hi, this is Kelsey Bell. I'm a resident of Durango. My public comment tonight is in regards to Agenda Item 13.4, which is to temporarily discontinue meetings of the CRC while the city discusses and determines the future of boards and commissions. I'll keep my comments short. Many of my colleagues have already talked about the CRC. For those who aren't familiar, the Community Relations Commission deals with equity and giving a voice to people that live in this community who oftentimes don't have a platform. I first was involved with the CRC two years ago. That was one of the first times since I've lived in Durango that I was given a platform where I felt heard. At this point in time, I am heading a disability equity subcommittee to the CRC, and I have been for the past year. Just in the past week, we've had two different events that the CRC helped put together. One was a disability event in Durango, another was a movie in the park Spanish event. I will say that the work the CRC does is directly related to two of the city council's strategic goals, DEI, which is diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I would argue it's also very much related to the enhanced livability and sense of place. I think, I can't speak for everybody, but I can speak for myself as a disabled woman, that a lot of marginalized people in this community don't always have a sense of place. The CRC is a commission with solidarity between all kinds of marginalized people in our community. There's a lot of momentum behind this commission, a lot of accomplishments that other people have spoken about tonight. So I would just request that the CRC not have their meetings paused. I think putting a pause to this momentum would be disastrous. There are so many people in our community on the subcommittees and people who listen in on CRC meetings and come to events hosted by the CRC that don't have a lot of outlets in this community. So I just ask that city council, think about that in their discussion later tonight, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then others that have raised their hand virtually?
Yes, Mayor, we have Wendolin Omaña, next to speak. I'm going to let her in now.
Gracias, mi nombre es Wendolin Omaña, y voy a hablar acerca de... I serve as a director for an organization that works towards the improvement of physical and emotional health for the Latinx community in Durango. Many of the circumstances that don't favor at all the brown immigrant constituents of Durango and our cause of unnecessary stress and anxiety have been finally called the attention of those in more favorable situations in this town. The last year has brought significant change for us. To hear that these efforts towards inclusion will have a break feels confusing. I thought Durango was doing a good effort. We don't feel invisible anymore, or at least it felt like that when our concerns were supported, somebody was listening. It has been through the efforts that Tirza Camacho from the CRC did in 2021 to listen to us and called for meetings, one in the community to listen and then routed them to the CRC. Also, voices from the CRC have had the power to talk with politicians to actually address what are concerns. We have seen a lot of improvement for inclusion. And even though I can only speak from my own experience as a member of the Latinx community, it also has been through the CRC that I got to learn about other groups that share the same feeling of feeling invisible, just because we are no white, we are no privileged, and we don't have very favorable circumstances or situations that are greeting us. Another thing is that as a brown woman with a strong accent, having a brown person who also doesn't identify as white or has not been raised as white person, it feels safe. It feels safe to express our concerns, it feels safe to speak about the anxiety and the levels of stress that our community or specific communities live in a town where we feel most of the time that we don't exist. Thank you so much.
So that will end...
Actually, Mayor, we have one more person who...
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, so next we have Darcy Diaz, and I'm going to be putting them through right now.
Hello, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Darcy Diaz. Estoy aquí porque me siento muy preocupada porque van a parar las reuniones de el CRC. Yo quiero solo que escuchen un poco de todo lo que han hecho ellos por mi comunidad. Como ya saben, soy latina, mi único idioma es el español. Y ver, como ustedes saben, el viernes pasado tuvimos una película en español, ver mi comunidad y ver mi película favorita en español en un lugar donde yo no pensé que iba a poder escuchar esta película en español. Siempre que vamos al cine nunca encontramos una película en nuestro idioma. Y esto fue tan bonito para mí, fue tan bonito para mi familia. Sé que hubieron esfuerzos muy grandes, sé que este grupo nos apoyó tanto para que pudiera pasar esto. Y la verdad es que no sé cuáles son los motivos que en estos momentos tengan para parar estas reuniones. Pero quiero manifestar que no es justo que vayan a cerrar o vayan a parar estas reuniones cuando mi comunidad por fin está siendo escuchada. Cuando nos regresaron la ruta por donde yo vivo, la de las 160 WES, yo soy residente de Website. Y hoy en día uno dice, yo vivo en Website, y mucha gente quiere conocer un poco de todo lo que pasó en Website, cómo nos unimos como comunidad. Pero si esta unión sucedió fue porque estos grupos han escuchado, nos han empoderado, nos han ayudado. Y si nos cierran estos pequeños espacios que por fin estamos teniendo, yo llevo cinco años en Durango, vengo inmigrantes de mi país, vengo huyéndole al conflicto de mi país y ver una comunidad tan unida, tan amorosa que nos escucha. Yo quiero dar las gracias por los espacios que le están brindando a mi comunidad latina. Y quiero también, aparte de dar las gracias, quiero que por favor no nos cierren los espacios que tenemos hoy en día, sino al contrario, cada día hayan más, que a cada día hayan más reuniones donde nosotros podamos ser escuchados. Muchas gracias a todos.
Thank you. Any others virtually?
Yes, we've had a few more people raise their hand. So next we have Julianne Begay. And I'm going to allow them to talk now.
Hi, my name is Julianne Begay, and I'm a city resident. I've lived in Durango for the past seven years, and I'm submitting a comment regarding the discontinuation of the Community Relations Commission's meetings, commission meetings, I apologize. I'm a Native American resident of Durango, and the Community Relations Commission provides an important space to talk about issues relating to diversity and discrimination in Durango. I can say, as someone who's lived here for seven years, it's incredibly frustrating to be Native American, to live in a town that has a significant Native American population, and yet see no Native American representation in any positions of power in Durango. And it's even more frustrating to see that one of the most prominent forms of representation is an offensive sign sitting across from Toa Teen Gallery. One of the things that the Community Relations Commission did was they provided a space for residents to talk about that sign. And that was incredibly powerful for me, because I got to hear from other Native American residents in Durango about their experiences living in Durango and how that sign impacts them. So I just ask that the city council consider my comments and the comments that everyone else has made in their discussion of this topic later in this meeting. The Community Relations Commission is an important forum for marginalized groups in Durango and for Native American residents like myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Haley Kirkman. And I'm putting them through to speak now.
Hi, everyone. My name is Haley Kirkman, and I've lived in Durango for about 10 years. I wrote a letter to council and to the city manager this morning, sharing my full sentiments about the proposed discontinuation of the Community Relations Commission. And I just wanted to come on here to, again, urge your group to not discontinue this important commission. This commission is a huge asset to the city, and it would be so foolish to willingly give up this tremendous help that these folks are providing you with. I'm not sure if everyone has had a chance to familiarize themselves with each individual that sits on this commission, but I would say that they're all overqualified to be doing the kind of work they're doing for you, yet they continue to show up year after year without pay and to provide their expertise and their... and to provide their expertise and their guidance. And they deserve to be listened to. You know, their budget is $5,000 annually, which you would easily surpass if you were paying a consultant or other consultants for DEI work. So it's high time that each of you who sits in these positions of power prioritize this work and listen to the people who are actively disenfranchised in this community. You know, this commission deserves equal, if not more, attention than, say, other commissions that focus on other parts of Durango living that we all love and enjoy, like Parks and Rec, like the arts. You know, this demands attention, and please do not cancel this commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more hand raised. Sandia Atkinson. And she's come, they're coming through right now.
Hello, this is Sandia Tillotson, or Sandia Atkinson. I have lived in Durango for the past 12 years and recently moved out to the county. I'm here to also speak on the topic of discontinuing the Community Relations Commission. And as so many people have already spoken to tonight, the CRC has done incredible work in this community over the past several years, and it would be an absolute shame to discontinue it when they are on the cusp of making so much beautiful change in our community. As a community facilitator and change management consultant, I want to speak to the importance of having changemakers who really rock the boat, who challenge us to become uncomfortable, who really push the needle on things. It is appropriate for elected officials to often play perhaps that more centrist role, but we need the counterpart of some more extreme perspectives at times to really let us know what is cutting edge, how can we be changing to improve the quality of life for all of our residents within the city of Durango. And this is an essential counterpart to what elected officials are doing. And so I want to reiterate what Haley Kirkman said. You could not be getting a consultant for the price that all of these wonderful people, these experts in this topic are providing to the city. And I really want to encourage you to continue this commission just as you are continuing all of the other boards and commission that serve for the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Has anyone else raised their hand virtually?
Yes, we have one more person who's raised their hand. No name associated, just a phone number. I'm going to bring them through now.
Please state your name, and if you're a resident of the city or the county.
All right. Hey, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. This is Helen Kedich, resident of Durango, and I just want to also express my support for the CRC. Out of any of the advisory boards that we have in our beloved town, this is the one that I see most. I was over at a picnic that was supported by the CRC just recently for the Center of Southwest Independence, and so many members from CRC really just participating in phenomenal community events and keeping a pulse on this city that I think would potentially go maybe not unnoticed completely, but definitely underrepresented. So I don't know if CRC folks are in the room, but I really just want to express my gratitude for their leadership and their advice on how we can be better as a city and really encourage council to continue to continue the advisory board. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Does that?
We don't appear to have anyone else who would like to speak online.
Thank you, and thank you to all of you who participated tonight in the public participation part of our program. The next thing we're going to do is we're going to have a proclamation, and then we will have a vote of council about going into executive session. I don't know how long executive session will last. We'll come out and then go back into our regular meeting. So right now I'll do the proclamation. Is there, this is for Durango Farmers Market. Is there someone here to receive it? So I will read this proclamation, and you'll have a few minutes to speak about, if you choose to, about the importance of the Farmers Market Week. So let me get to the microphone here. Durango Farmers Market Week, August 7th to 13th, 2022. Whereas farmers and ranchers in La Plata and the surrounding four counties provide local residents with access to healthful, locally, and regionally produced foods through farmers markets, which are expanding and evolving to accommodate the demand for a diverse array of agricultural products. And whereas farmers markets and other agricultural direct marketing outlets provide infrastructure to assist in the distribution of farm and value-added products, thereby contributing approximately $9 billion each year to the US economy. And whereas farmers markets service as significant outlet by which small to medium new and beginning and veteran agriculture producers market agricultural products, generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities nationwide. And whereas the Durango City Council recognizes the importance of expanding agricultural marketing opportunities that assist and encourage the next generation of farmers and ranchers, generate farm income to help stimulate business development and job creation, build community connections through rural and urban linkages. And whereas farmers markets serve as business incubators for local food production, local artisans and service providers, thereby contributing to the economic health and vitality of Durango and the surrounding area. And whereas farmers markets serve as a community hub where residents and visitors gather to experience the local character and culture of downtown district. Now therefore, to further awareness of farmer markets' contributions to Durango's community, I, Barbara Knows, with the mayor of Durango, do hereby proclaim the week of August 7th to 13th, 2022, as Durango Farmers Market Week, in conjunction with the observance of National Farmers Market Week, and encourage citizens to celebrate farmers markets with appropriate observation and activities. Thank you. Let me sign this for you. And if you'd like to leave a few comments.
Thank you so much. My name is Melanie Gonzalez. I am the market manager for the Durango Farmers Market. And I have with me tonight Sheila Payne from Mockingcrow Farm, who is not only a vendor at our farmers market, but also sits on our board of directors. Just briefly, the Durango Farmers Market has existed for over 25 years now. It was created to support local farmers and ranchers, also artisans within La Plata County and our four neighboring counties. We have grown over the past 25 years. We now have over 100 approved vendors, and we have an amazing venue that we have for 25 weeks over the summer. I would argue that Farmers Market Week should be all year round. We are asking for this particular time period because that is when the summer bounty does roll in. We have adapted and responded to our community over the course of the years. With 2020, we were able to scale back and become a very essential service that just provided food. With work with the CRC folks, we have expanded our language capacity. We have translated many of our documents into Spanish, and we are welcoming our Latinx community with open arms. We do provide a lot of nutritional food assistance programs. To my calculations, last year I believe we are pushing $50,000 of supplemental food money that has been distributed in our community. And it has been proven that every $1 that is spent on nutritional food programs results in an extra $3 in the community. So just multiply that 150,000. We are very proud of what we have brought to Durango and that we can provide the cheapest downtown rent, I think, anywhere. We have provided a lot of incubation for businesses, and I will drop a few names here. Fired Up Pizza, Cream Bean Berry, Hummingbird Herbals, Animus Chocolate Company, Sticks and Stones, Crystal Boutique. I will stop there, but I hope you all enjoy our market, and please come down and celebrate with us, not only on the 13th, but any Saturday. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a discussion of a consideration of going into executive session. And the purpose for this is to, a discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session to discuss the potential purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real property regarding the city-owned property, La Plata County Parcel Number 566529200036, commonly known as the Durango-Silverton Railroad Parking Lot, including the lease or other potential uses of that property as permitted in CRS 2464024A, and to discuss matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, or instructing negotiators related to the above described manners as permitted in CRS 2464024E.
So moved. I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? May we have a vote?
Councilor Beal?
Yes.
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Pritchett-Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Knowsworthy?
Yes. We will go into executive session and we'll come back, but I cannot give you a sense of the time.
Thank you.
Excuse me, audience. Okay. Back in session. Seven forty-two. I reconvene this meeting at seven forty-two P M. For the record, council met an executive session for the purpose of discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session to discuss potential purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real property regarding the city-owned property La Plata County Parcel Number five six six five two nine two zero 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 three six, commonly known as the Durango-Silverton Railroad Parking Lot, including the lease or other potential uses of that property as permitted in C R S twenty-four six four oh two four A, and to discuss matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, or instructing negotiators related to the above described matters as permitted in C R S two four six four oh two four E. No decisions were made. If anyone who participated in the executive session believes the discussion went beyond the proper scope of the executive session, please state your objections now. Seeing none, the next item on the agenda, we'll proceed to the next item on the agenda. Let's see, and that will be the consent agenda. Oh, no, operations, excuse me, excuse me, city manager.
No worries. Thank you, Mayor. I do have one item on the city.
I do have one item on the city operational updates. I do have Tom Sluse to give a brief presentation as requested by the city council in regards to the choice that on Durango D Gov TV station.
Deputy councillor Tom Sluse, Director of Community and Media Engagement. So this is just a high level, just responding to a request at the last meeting about the status of D Gov. So I just wanted to let everybody know that we're targeting September first to turn D Gov off, and we are working with the library so that anybody who is left out potentially from internet service in particular, Luke has stepped up and he's going to have his staff available to kind of ease that transition. So we're going to keep our messaging going particularly on D Gov. Right now, we're saying, you know, let us know how things are going, and we're going to start saying, moving forward, reach out to the library, and we're basically here to help you with that transition.
Can you give a little bit of background decision?
Sure. Yeah.
For continuity's sake.
Yeah, so the background is essentially that, you know, we're trying to allocate our resources to where the demand is for our messaging, and right now it's just simply not at D Gov. I mean, there are people out there watching it guaranteed, but, you know, we have to balance out essentially what looks like fifty, maybe a hundred people versus the thousands of people who are going to our website and social media in particular. I think we have ninety-three percent of Americans on the internet right now, and all of our research points just consistently to, you know, as TV usage goes down, internet's going up, and that's really where our demand is. And so in just in terms of having essentially a third of my staff dedicated for a technology that's not being utilized as well as other ones, we're trying to pivot and go more toward the internet and toward social media and toward short format video in particular. I think we're doing a lot of videos these days, profiling employees, services, programs. There's a lot out there, we're getting a really good response on it, so it just, it kind of all points to really one direction. You know, that said, there's also discussion going on with the future of broadcast. There's technologies out there called A T S three, three point O. You know, it's not going to die by any means as far as just rabbit ears and cable. So who knows, you know, maybe five years down the line, it could come back potentially, but we're still just kind of in a waiting pattern for that to happen.
Questions for Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Tom. I was the one who asked, I guess, to get this presentation out in the public during a meeting. I think it never came to council for inputs on stopping this D Gov service. The cost you mentioned was a key component. I'm just wondering, was that for the whole package of filming and everything, or is it because, I'll tell you where I'm going to. We watched TV from our laptop, cast it straight on TV, I can do that with anything. So would it be that complex to transmit on TV, on a TV channel, straight away, what is visible on YouTube and all those other channels, and why, what, no, go ahead.
The actual transmission to television is not, in itself is not the problem. The problem is that setting up the equipment and setting up the control room with the tower and having that that knowledge essentially of all of the hardware, all of the software. I mean, a broadcast television position is exceedingly rare for a municipality of our size for that reason. When we put out a request for proposals, and we had one person, one company that said they would do it for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And it's, you know, pushing the button again, that's easy, but it's all the background stuff that has this incredible depth of knowledge that's required that we just simply can't afford that kind of money for it.
And I think you explained this, I think a lot of people, including myself, are not aware of what goes behind it. So you have a whole infrastructure and tower, and so it's not just casting the YouTube video through an online system right to a TV channel.
Right, I mean, YouTube's great, because I can go right now, hit, click to YouTube, and it's a ten-second process. It's different from a full-time staff position, otherwise going over the air to cable as well as rabbit ears, because it's a whole control room back there. If you haven't seen it, I'll take you back there. It's amazing up on the mountain, too, it's just, it's incredible.
Okay, thank you for giving everybody who listens that update, and also the background, how complex it is behind the screens.
Other comments, or?
I just found it interesting that there were so few other municipalities. I think you mentioned six or ten, and they're like, yeah, the whole nation or something, that are still doing the broadcast, and there's a reason for that. So I really appreciate that you did the research to find that out and to head us in what is probably a better direction.
And so, Tom, does that also mean no more council connections?
No more council connections unless council decides they really want it, we'd be happy to bring that back.
Okay, well, I for one would not miss it. What about you guys?
We're looking for other ways to get the message out again, and we were just not getting a lot of eyeballs on that program. And we're getting, for example, we had a simple, when, Kim, when you were at the Santa Rita for Arbor Day, we had eight hundred views on that video alone, you know, and we've had stuff on Facebook that's been in the thousands compared to, say, twelve people or eight people watching Council Connection.
It's just amazing how it transitions and it moves, and you have to stay on top of it, and I'm glad you're here helping us do that. So thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
I just want to add, I actually think that this is not a policy decision of D Gov. We, the policy that we've set is for you to communicate with the the community in ways that seem appropriate. So, and it's also, the other policy we've set is to be efficient with our resources. So the actual administration in making those decisions, I live with the city manager as an, on the operational side, but I appreciate you going the extra mile to actually inform people of the decision and the background and the rationale. So thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and then also just, I think, when coming out of COVID, one of the things that that did is if we look at a change is it really pushed everyone to the internet and finding different mediums, and I think that's what we're seeing remarkably well, that our communications and media, media and communications engagement team, community engagement team has really done a really good job of. And if you take a look at some of the videos that they're producing now, that it's on our social media channels are really, they're really good, they're really succinct, and that's kind of what we're looking for. We noticed that the less time, they're in like two, three-minute videos, the more views we get, the longer in time it goes, the timing of the views on those do decrease. So I do want to congratulate Tom and his team and some of the great work they're doing in posting on our social media sites and getting a lot of views out there.
Very good. On that note, we'll move to item eight, the review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item Nine. May we have a reading of the consent agenda, please?
Items eight point one through eight point three are approval of minutes. Eight point one is approval of minutes of the July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two City Council Study Session. Eight point two is approval of minutes from the July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two City Council Special Meeting. Eight point three is approval of minutes of the July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two City Council Regular Meeting. Eight point four is discussion and possible action concerning the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission applicants and placement into the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three program. Eight point five is discussion and possible action concerning the submission of a Colorado Department of Local Affairs Gray and Black Market Marijuana Enforcement Annual Grant Program Application for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. Eight point six is discussion and possible action concerning a resolution authorizing and appropriation to the grants fund for the pass-through grant from the Colorado Department of Law Post Grant for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. Eight point seven is a request for a public hearing on the South Fork Preliminary Plan Subdivision to be held August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And eight point eight is a request for a public hearing on the Assay Development Preliminary Plan Subdivision, also to be held August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Are there any items that council wishes to be removed?
Are there any items council wishes to be removed from the consent agenda?
Oh, yes. Like to remove item eight point four from the consent agenda.
And would you like to explain why?
He can do that when we do it later. Okay. I'll go ahead and move that we approved the consent agenda with the exception of item eight point four.
I'll second. Any discussion? Let's have that vote.
Mayor Pratim Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Bosmans?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes. So item eight point four, Councillor Bosmans.
Yeah, I pulled this one from the consent agenda because this is the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, and some of the applicants are my children, and I probably believe that the rest, the best approach is to abstain from a vote on that. And as such, I'll leave it up to the rest of the council to make their decision.
Okay.
Dirk, traditionally, we've had the person remove themselves from the area, so it's not to influence the vote, but do you think that's necessary under this?
I think in this case, I think in this case, it's, you know, it's probably not necessary.
Then I would move that we approve item eight point four.
I'll second. Is there any discussion? Let us have the vote.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
Mayor Pratim Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes, and let me just, for the public, this is, the council is accepting all eleven applicants for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council to be brought into this board.
We have no public hearings tonight, so we will move to introduction of ordinances. Item twelve point one is, and I'm just coming to this, is an ordinance amending chapter twenty-seven of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango Land Use and Development Code by the amendment of chapter two, three, and seven related to regulations of accessory dwelling units, A D Us, and definitions and declaring an effective date. And just checking. Dirk, you're going to handle that.
Yes, this is ordinance oh, twenty-two dash twenty-seven. This ordinance was prepared at the direction of council following a hearing at the prior council meeting. The ordinance is ready for first reading tonight. Would be a motion to approve.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Let's have that vote.
Mayor Pratim Youssef?
Yes.
Councillor Baxter?
Yes.
Councillor Bosmans?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozworthy?
Yes. Great. So the next item is item thirteen point one. Public input and discussion about possible action on a resolution submitting to the registered electors of the City of Durango, a ballot issue concerning retention of a certain city lodgers' tax revenues. And I believe, Dirk, you're also going to be.
Yes, and I will ask for assistance, I think, I hope Jared's still here and Tom is here as well. They're just, wow. This item has been discussed by council at a couple of study sessions over the last month or so. Quickly, just overview of the situation is that the lodgers' tax was increased by voter approval in April twenty-one. The Tabor, the estimate of the amount to be collected during nineteen, twenty-twenty-one was nine hundred thousand dollars. The actual collections for twenty-one from the increase of the three point two five percent was about six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in excess of that amount. In addition, the Tabor estimate for the collections during twenty-two for the increase in this lodgers' tax was two million dollars. The latest estimate is that the twenty-two collections may also exceed that limit by approximately six hundred and ten thousand dollars. Again, to be clear, those Tabor limits for the new three and a quarter percent do not impact collections and expenditures for the pre-existing two percent, and they don't impact collections for the tax increase after January first, two thousand and twenty-three. However, under Tabor, either the council is required to refund the excess collections or seek voter approval to retain and expend those amounts. So at this point, based on input from council at study sessions, a resolution was prepared proposing a ballot question to retain both twenty-one excess collections and twenty-two collections. However, council is still faced with deciding if you want to submit that question how the uses of those funds that are retained and expended for both twenty-one and twenty-two. And also a question if the ballot question is not approved, the refund procedure that will be used, again, to remind council, the refund of the twenty-one excess collections has to occur before the end of nineteen, of two thousand and twenty-two. The refund or approval for retention of the twenty-two amounts can happen prior to the end of twenty-three. So with that, I think that we have, you had a draft resolution in your agenda doc. This item is on tonight primarily for, or at least partially for having public input on this question, because you, again, took information and discussed these items in study session but have not yet taken specific public input on that. I know that Tom and his team have engaged in some public outreach, and so we, I think he can explain the process that they went through to do that, present that information to council, and then we can discuss any questions the council has, and then suggest that you take public input before we can, you know, then spend more time discussing details of the resolution.
Okay. So.
Tom, do you want to?
Jared, Tom, I'm trying to figure out how you.
Well, and we put together a brief slideshow. I know that council has received much of this information before, so just really quick brush through on the presentation. This is the language that exists within that council packet. Just wanted to have it up there for public consumption if they hadn't read the packet. We did do a summary per discussion at the at the study session two weeks ago, just kind of spelling out and showing the proportions that would happen, and actually the proportions of the overages. and actually the proportions of the overages, twenty-one and twenty-two overages, that would go to transit, art, and culture, and the council's determination methodology if those were selected, if, to retain the dollars and use them as their, for current purposes, excluding marketing. And I think that was a request to council in part. So that's just a brief summary of those numbers. And then Dirk will probably explain this a little later. He had a potential suggestion to affect that refund language in the resolution if this is the direction council wanted to move, and then Tom had a few slides in here. I'll let him run them.
Yeah, just real quick, the outreach that we did for this was through our normal social media and news release channels. I think the only extra step that we did was we specifically reached out to bid tourism, data, data.
Visit Durango?
And all three of those, viewing them as having a lot of stakeholders who are going to have some pretty important feedback. And we can get into the details. Jared's got them on slides, so just to make sure we specifically targeted those groups, and we had a hundred and seventeen responses.
So as, as you can see, I had old data, right, because I had, I had ninety-three responses to date asking to rank the ballot language that they would, once he asked. A brief summary of that is, and don't read the methodology, it's very boring unless you want to read that kind of stuff. The keep and retain all revenues from twenty-one and twenty-two and use them as directed per the existing question was the highest ranked choice of those ninety-three respondents so far. Again, this survey, I believe, is going to continue to be open, and we'll continue to collect information from it. And then on down the line for the other responses. So, so again, it's a, it's a compilation score, and that's one of the difficulties of the methodology. So if you rank the thing, your favorite first, and then the, it gets a bunch of fourth-ranked votes, right, it's compiling all of that. So, again, thirty-five of the respondents said, that's our favorite thing, right? And, and you will see thirty-four people had, had responded that they would like both of those and a different use of the funds, but that also had forty-four absolutely bottom-end responses that weighed that response down, right?
So do you have any sense of if the respondents came from any one industry?
I don't believe.
To tourism, to, so that that may have.
Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think it, it asked for identification in the survey. So these are anonymous responses.
As I mentioned in the response to this packet was, I believe that it's probable that the to-be-decided question suffers because it's not specific enough. I don't know what that means. So I think in that sense, we do have to be careful about how we say.
And there, there was, to that point, an open-ended question of if you, if you select the to be determined, what would you like to be determined, right? The highest response for that was housing, followed by arts, parking, and then much lower scores for transportation, infrastructure, homelessness, and events. So, and that is about what I got.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Could you, could you keep the slide that has its, has, that's the one, no, the one before that? Nope, that one.
Very touching.
Gives the four options. That's just easier to kind of have that in mind. All right. Thoughts from council? Or public? It's not a public hearing, so I'm not opening up.
But it was agendas for public input, so if anybody wants, I don't know, I think it was a sign-up sheet.
Okay, thank you.
Teresa Kraft. Hi, I'm Teresa Kraft, a fifteen-year resident of Durango and the deputy director at the powerhouse. I apologize if possibly my comment should have been in the general one. I'm just going to go ahead with it. Um, awesome, we made money. I have an idea how to spend it. To leverage that just fantastic, you know, strong tourist economy that we have to benefit our Durango residents, which is how I understood the lodgers' tax in the first place and why I voted for it, I propose upgrading the powerhouse to include a fabulous water table exhibit. It would incredibly increase our interactive space by using an outdoor area that is there and can be used, but the interactivity and the exploration that comes with that beautiful sensory play that you find with water tables would be an incredible addition. At large museums, if you want to find the kids, go look for the water. That's where they are. We feel like this would be an incredible benefit to the powerhouse. We have talked to a company, kind of one of the, the best in the industry boss, and got a comment, or excuse me, a quote, that does land at about four hundred thousand dollars. I also have sticker shock on museum prices, but I really think that would help engage the scientists of all ages here in Durango, and would be a good use of the lodgers' tax money. Thank you. It can be many different things. You would imagine almost table height. For general play, you can like build, the one we had, you could build dams to change the flow of the water. You can have much taller components. In fact, we could go up to like thirty feet high right there on the corner of Fourteenth Street in Camino and really be a cool eye draw down into the area. You know, water can cascade, mist, you can do all sorts of, you know, gravity kind of experiments and showing that kind of side of science. Trying to think what else. There is a specific way you can modify it so that you can put a toddler basically in a seat that's built in. So obviously, when there's water, you have to consider safety. So there's a little toddler seat, so they can still do that sensory play, strapped in, very secure, wouldn't have to worry about them. You can have it be very fun and artistic. You can also go for a very natural look. I'm hoping you all have been to museums where you've probably seen the children's water play area. And again, it can be anywhere from like a four-foot diameter pond to twenty feet long, you know, to show the flow of a river.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have anyone virtually who's raised their hand and wishes to speak regarding the lodgers' tax?
Yes, we do. Give me just one second here. I, I have John Simpson who would like to speak. I'm giving him access now.
John?
John?
Does that say he's talking? Because we can't hear anything.
It doesn't say that he's talking. I, but it doesn't, he doesn't show as muted either. He's trying muting and unmuting himself, but, yeah, we're not getting him for whatever reason.
Mayor, Mayor Nozworthy, John Simpson, eighteen thirty-one. Chris, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we got you, John.
Okay, good. I'd like to advocate for the do-nothing option. I think you really got to think about the, the people in the community who are struggling paying the bills. The six hundred thousand dollars in the big picture of the city budget is essentially nothing. Julie Brown stole, she stole seven hundred thousand and nobody knew about it. So the six hundred thousand in the big picture is rounding errors. But what it does do, if you could get it back to the community, is it helps people, you know, offset the impact from the, from the tourists, the increase in food, the increase in gas, the increase in everything. So I think that's the, the most important option. And the other thing to consider is it should be by itself because the other options, the twenty-twenty-one is really a Tabor issue related to the rate going forward, I'm sorry, the, the lodgers' rate going forward. The twenty-twenty-one excess can stand by itself. It doesn't have to be combined. And, you know, legally, I questioned if it even should be combined. So as you're just talking tonight, think about the, what if we do nothing? Because I think that is the best option to get money back into the people who are affected by the increase in lodgers. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Has anyone else raised their hand virtually?
Yes, we have one more person who's raised their hand. Kristen, I'm going to put her through now.
Kristen Mishker, three-six-one, South Camino Del Rio, number two fifty-nine, Durango. Yeah, give the money back to the people. End of discussion. That's my comment.
Thank you. Any others raise their hand?
It doesn't appear so, no.
I'll open it up for any questions or comments from council, or if the city manager or city attorney needs to add anything else.
I would simply respond about the combination of the twenty-two and the twenty-one question. The single-issue requirement for ballot questions that I believe Mr. Simpson is referring to actually applies to state questions but not to local government questions. So from a legal perspective, I think you combine the two. So I, again, I think at this point, if we want to, you know, circle back, I'll entertain questions from council, and then perhaps it's appropriate or helpful to put the, the proposed ballot question back up on the screen. I will just briefly comment on timing, as you know, and you saw the draft resolution does have blanks in it, particularly as to the proposed uses of any retention that's proposed. So it may be appropriate that council gives further direction tonight on how you wish to proceed. And then we still do have time to bring a final resolution back to council on, in two weeks, on the sixteenth, rather than trying to fill in blanks and draft tonight, but that will be up to council. I did prepare some language regarding a potential refund as well that Jared referred to earlier, so we can put those back up there and quickly run through that language if council would find that helpful as well. So I'd be, I'd entertain any questions that council has.
I have a question, just for all of our benefit. There will be a pro and con statement, correct, as part of if this goes to a ballot?
This is.
Can you kind of talk about that?
Yeah, this is, this will be a Tabor question, so, you know, particularly if it involves twenty-two, it'll be treated as a Tabor question. So we, there will be a pro-con, you know, process. And, but those are prepared based on comments that we receive from input that you receive. So council is allowed, under the Fair Campaign Practices Act, to put out a informational piece that's just provided information that can also provide information to the electorate as to questions or answers to questions, common questions anyway. So there will be that opportunity as well.
I believe the city attorney asked for the language to be put back up there.
This is language that I prepared to, again, the refund, you know, just to be clear, council has not made any decisions about whether to refund or whether to put a ballot question before the voters. So just to provide some refund language as an option, this came primarily from a staff review of all of the options for a possible refund scenario. And the only one, again, the refund has to occur for the twenty-one dollars prior to the end of twenty-two. So if, particularly if the election occurs in November, that would allow just a matter of a few weeks to get that refund accomplished. So this language is an option to add to the resolution, which would allow council to insert a, or decide at the time you adopt the resolution on a refund method. And just to read it aloud, it says, the refund of any excess collections of lodgers' tax during twenty-twenty-one, which is required as a result of a negative vote on the ballot question described in Section Three herein, shall be carried out prior to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two by providing a credit to each, sort of two choices here, each city utility account or each residential city account in an amount equal to the total refund divided by the number of accounts eligible for the refund stated herein. So, again, that's the basic refund option suggested by staff that would either, again, go to all utility accounts or to just residential utility accounts.
Can you clarify for that, that for me, all utility accounts or all resident? So who is eligible for the refund if there was a refund? It's a utility account?
This particular scenario, anyone who has a city utility account.
So it's, it would be to the city utility holders, and like the holder of the account?
Yes. The person who's, who's, well, maybe Jared can explain, you know, who would.
Yeah, so, so all utility account holders are assigned a, to the owner of the property, and then they can be transferred if there is a tenancy to the tenant if the owner so desires, right? We require them to fill out some paperwork that says, I, I am transferring responsibility for this account to a tenant, right? So in that case, the tenant would receive the credit, right? Because they would not have to pay one, two bills, however many it takes to use that. Or alternatively, the owner, if they are paying the utilities, would receive that credit.
And then can you remind us how much the refund would be for residential users?
So just based on the twenty-twenty-one refund, I believe, overall, it was ninety dollars or so, if, approximately, if it were applied to all accounts, and it was a hundred and thirty-five dollars if it only applied to residential accounts, removing commercial accounts from that equation.
So if, if the ballot measure failed, for example, and so then we would refund the twenty-twenty-one dollars by the end of the year, then would we then refund the twenty-twenty-two dollars by the end of the next year if they were put together on the same ballot? With, using the same method?
Yeah, well, no, I think at that point, you would, this, this language only refers to a refund of the twenty-one dollars.
Okay.
So we assume that there's going to be an overage in twenty-two, but we won't really know that until the end of the year. So I, the council could make a separate decision about a different, a different refund method of twenty-two in that event, if the election fails, or there would be an option to.
Do another.
Do another ballot, right, do another ballot.
All right, thank you. And can you also put up the language?
Yes, so this is the draft ballot language. This is essentially the same language that was in the agenda doc for the study session, except that this is limited to, this provides for both twenty-one and twenty-two. And it would not, it would only change the, or provide for an allocation of the expenditures of the twenty-one and twenty-two dollars. It does not propose an amendment to the allocation of those dollars moving forward. So the pre-existing allocation that was approved in twenty-twenty-one would still be in effect for future collections. Does that make sense?
But not for the over collection.
Right, so this just affects the two years, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-two, not twenty-three and going forward. And again, that's something the council could also determine.
It's just for the, sorry, it's just for the overage.
Yes, yes.
So I guess the question is, or one of the questions is, if we decide to do a ballot measure that doesn't allocate it based upon the previous lodgers' tax ratios, what would we want to allocate it to?
Correct. And I think the point of leaving it to be D is well-taken, that you think it could have been skewed negatively, that people didn't support that because they didn't know what. We've heard some, we've received some letters, we've heard people last week, our last session, talk about housing, workforce housing. We've heard other issues. other issues. So I guess what I want to ask of council is, right now, we're at a combining both twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, twenty-two. Is there any change of thinking of doing that just with the twenty twenty-one, any change of thinking on anything so far? And then if we are proceeding, a sense of preliminary thinking of what that those two, to be determined topics should be.
So it's possible that the total of twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two could be around one point two million dollars.
Correct.
Just wanted to make that clear so that we were talking about that in a rational manner.
And I would also say that, while I've heard the public comment tonight, I would say that six hundred thousand dollars could be a significant sum to some departments. You know, we have, you know, we have a fund right now that is very, is running out, and we're using it judiciously to, you know, leverage some workforce housing. So I'm not advocating for that, but I'm just saying six hundred thousand may not seem like a lot, but within the, the management of the city, it could, it could be consequential.
To recap the survey real quick, the first question got the most approval, is that correct? So keeping it as is allocated in the original ballot language.
That, that is accurate. The highest score was.
That one. And then, but on the list of potential other uses, housing was the most, and then arts.
Housing, arts.
Parking, transportation.
Parking and transportation.
If I may ask a question on that, much if you've done, Jessica?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the survey only included those four options. Yeah, I just want to refresh my memory. There was no option for a refund. There was no mention, do you want a refund?
There was not.
Okay. I, I'll just cut through the chase a little bit. I, we discussed it during the study session. I am very pro-refunding. The majority of council gave direction to move forward with the ballot question. And I remain of the same position that the refund is the easy and the fastest way to get some money back to our residents. A ballot question costs, what, forty-two thousand dollars, I think was on the numbers that we see later today. And to, at very, in a very short timeframe, try to identify how to spend this money, even though all the uses are very good, all the ones are listed, including the Discovery Museum. I think it does, it requires a lot more community feedback than a survey that didn't even include the refund option and has nine, a hundred, ten respondents. I guess that's where I'll stop. So I, I'm in favor of a straight refund for twenty twenty-one, and I think as Mr. Simpson explained, I think the twenty twenty-one can be refunded, the twenty twenty-two, unless you want to change the tax rate, should go to a ballot question, because otherwise there are implications for the lodger's tax rate. Hope that's clear for our community.
I think it's interesting because one of the ladies who made a public comment was talking about giving the money back to the city residents, and it's in general, not the city residents who paid this tax, it's tourists, so it's lodger's tax. And I just wanted to make that clear because I think there might be some misunderstanding there. So just for clarity.
I'll just chime in real quick with the kind of starting discussion. I'm not saying that I, this is I'm going to finalize myself on, but we'll just talk. I agree with Kim, that comment of giving residents their money back. This is lodger's tax, and so it was paid for mostly from tourists. And so we had that discussion of trying to refund people that came and visited and that, how, what a nightmare that could be. And a lot of the cases that Mr. Simpson talked about were sales tax refunds to residents. And so it's a little bit different, but I'm not saying I necessarily disagree. I think my current thoughts is going along the lines of that, I know it was slim margins, but it did pass. And we had, for the first time in upping our lodger's tax, the support of arts and culture, the lodging community, transport, like every, everyone kind of came on board and agreed. And so I'm sort of leaning on doing the first ballot language in terms of twenty-one, twenty-two, just to be easier and maintaining how it was voted on minus marketing, because I feel like we have the support for that. If I'm correct, Tom, when we did outreach, do we have the support for doing the current language minus the marketing money? Or no, we didn't have, is that not, am I reading into that? Sorry, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Jared had the slide up there that showed that, you might want to pull that back up for.
I just.
Exactly. So these were the four initial options when.
One. Not this one. No, the, the slide that has the circles on it.
Circles.
There you go. So that is without marketing.
Yeah.
Different question.
Yeah, this, this isn't related to the, to the survey.
No, I understand that, but I, this is, I was just, because she was talking about minus marketing, so I was.
Where it would go, I guess, but I, I suppose the key players like Visit Durango and I don't know, who, local FERT, like, do they support us going out to ballot with this minus marketing? Because marketing did get such a big bump compared to before, do you know?
Here's, I'm going to try and answer that. I mean, we, we had very little response, and so we had a second push. And, and that second push through Bid and Jack Llewellyn at the Chamber, and also Visit Durango is what gave us the majority of these responses. And I'm not sure this is the answer to the question, but based on these four initial options that were available, what, what it showed to me was by a very narrow margin, most people wanted to keep it according to the initial ballot language, and that's reflected in the scores of, they're weighted. So the element that's favored the most gets the highest weight. So the one on the top is two point eight seven, and that's, again, as vote, as was directed by voters in twenty twenty-one. Second one, two point four nine, this was people saying they should have the money go as voters directed in twenty twenty-one also. The next two were the number three and four. There's not a huge difference between them, but that was the, I think, the one takeaway I had. Again, I don't know if that answers it for marketing.
Does someone remember getting an email from Rachel or Tori? Okay. The saying that who, that what, that Visit Durango would support it for other uses?
Yes, and I'm looking at our staff.
Is that correct?
Durango.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I'm, I, there's like so many emails and things, and I just wanted to make sure I was on board.
What's actually a significant difference in this weighting method? So is is point two a significant difference? Is point, is one point five a significant difference? What's the significant?
You know, between two point three and two point eight seven, I think statistically, it's not a very great difference, but, but I think it kind of meshes with how the, the vote went in twenty twenty-one, which was most people barely said they preferred the, the allocations by percentages. And I think forty-eight, forty-nine didn't. And I think that's kind of reflected here, was my gut check, but it's not a huge.
Especially with the small sample that we're using, it's not, not statistically significant.
So I think that's the way I'm leaning. However, I'm, could be potentially persuaded to push in housing just because there was a lot of people that said they wanted that. I'm just nervous that it's not like, what, what could we do with it? Like, what impact could it make that, that specific amount of money? You know, I'm not.
Well, we looked at a budget or a fund recommendation, and we had the housing situation in there, and it was showing that pretty rapidly, especially if we want to have any impact on housing, we're going to have to find a revenue stream for that. And this would give us the opportunity to take the time to possibly say half of the two thousand and five re-up or something like that, to give us the time to think about how to fund it ongoing. And it would give us that leeway to have that, that thoughtful time.
Suppose it would also give us a little bit of a pulse through the vote on if people are willing to have, like, if we go back out for reallocation for the lodger's tax at some point potentially. If people would support including that in being wrapped in, like, set for lodger's tax, which could be interesting. Anyways, I'm just thinking out loud and that, like, just discussion. So that's where I'll start.
I think that was a good thought.
Okay, great.
And I just want to clarify, you did support both the twenty twenty-one and the twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, I think combined for this go-around, I support that. And then I'm sure if we need to, we'll deal with that when it comes.
Other thoughts?
I support the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two combined ballot for housing. And I think it needs to be a significant enough sum of money, and it is in this case, to make a difference, rather than splitting it up, say, a hundred and fifty thousand here and a hundred and fifty thousand there. So I think it can be impactful. And if it fails, then refunding the twenty twenty-one by utilities is, is where I would go.
I was going to suggest, first of all, I wanted to that the Durango, yeah, the Durango Herald editorial, I found very interesting, and I wanted to thank them for making it a topic. It's important to the community, and they supported the option three, which was going to the ballot and using it for new purposes. I thought that, and they gave us some really good ideas. So I, I enjoyed reading that. I want to thank them for that. I, I also appreciated some of their thoughts, which they said, you know, they said in their article, which is, you know, that one point two million can help us put a dent in pressing problems, and it can jumpstart projects that have the potential to have a big, big impact on our community, and I would agree with that. So I continue to think as well that I, I am in favor of going to the voters to ask the voters if they would approve letting us spend the increase, the close to one point two million. I also, though, wanted to thank those who have sent in ideas for for, for possible uses of the one point two million. Teresa Kraft, I think your idea of water feature at Powerhouse Science Center is actually a really good one, and I would lump that into arts and culture. And, you know, I, instead of, you know, what, what we were trying to do in the lodger's taxes, keep it kind of general such that councils could, and also not to tie future councils, but so that councils could decide, you know, each year how to spend that fund, those, those funds. So but I would, I would lump that into an arts and culture type of opportunity, but something like that, like you mentioned, it does, it has an, an impact, a direct impact on the community, our quality of life, and our sense of place. And I think that that is a good use of lodger's tax funds. And so, but I also, I was also think that a couple of residents have brought up the idea of parking. Clearly, it's a huge issue. Clearly, it's also an impact of lodger's tax. One point two million is not enough for a parking structure, but is it enough for a down payment? Is it enough to leverage grants? I mean, there's some really great opportunities, I think, to consider, and clearly, housing has been and remains a critically important issue for our community. Some of the things that we've talked about in the past is a sustainable source of funding for housing. And this one-time impact is not as sustainable, but it, it does have the possibility to make a dent. And so I think that they're all good discussions. I am in favor of definitely going to the voters, myself, for approval for the one point two million to have access to spend that. But I think maybe continued discussion one more time on the, on the actual use would be my, so that we could keep the, keep thinking and keep hearing from our community would be my path forward.
And I will also jump in with mine. Thank you. First of all, I also would support going in the combined twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. And I believe that housing, workforce housing, attainable housing is essential. We're hearing it from everyone, so it would be my preference just to put it for solely for housing, because that's one point two million, which could serve as in some ways, a bridge till we figure out a longer term and larger funding for that division. I'd also like to point out that, yes, I have heard about parking and also on other, and the importance of the arts community. We have funds set up there, so the transportation could be looking at, does it want to make a recommendation with some of its money around parking? So I, I feel as though we have avenues for the others. May not be as much as each group wants, but we do not have an avenue for housing, and this provides an avenue of funding for housing for a short-term period. So if I, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to ask if it, if it, if the ballot measure, if we come to an conclusion, not necessarily tonight, but about what the ballot measure says, the people's feelings about them, do we refund by city utilities if it fails? You might want to get.
That's a good point. So let's start with, with Councilor Bosmans.
I am. Let me just think here. I'm just refreshing my memory. On the study session, I asked if on the ballot question, there was the option to include a question for a refund. And I think majority of council was not supportive of that. So the only way it would be refunded is if the other options for ballot questions fail. And in that case, I still think a refund through the utility bill credit for residential users only, not commercial users, because they have benefited from the increase of tourism would be my preferred option.
Anyone want to jump in?
I'm going to agree with Councilor Bosmans.
Yeah, I like the residential aspect of it also.
Yeah, I'll support that. I also support only the residential possibility of a refund.
Okay, and I assume that you would want to include that in a bit of the resolution. So it sounds like we're not going to make a decision tonight on uses. It sounded like it would probably clarify the resolution, at least to that extent. And then decide on bringing it back on the sixteen. I will also clarify the question that you asked about the pro-cons, just sort of looking at table while I was while you were deliberating. So I will clarify the extent to which there will be a pro-con, and it's in a minimum, though, under the Fair Campaign Practices Act, could be a information sheet is provided about what the resolution says, and that could include good information about what would happen if it fails. So I'll clarify that piece of information on the sixteen.
And we could make a motion tonight if we, if we so chose.
Yes, you have that on the because, does someone have the motion pulled up?
Well, the motion would have to include what it was that we wanted.
Right.
Yeah.
And the motion actually would be to adopt the resolution. And it also, if you want to adopt a resolution tonight, would include language to add in to paragraph. But what I suggest in this paragraph seven, this paragraph, it would then, it would clarify the each residential city account, so you want this in the resolution.
But if we're right, just in the resolution, okay. Thank you. Is there a motion? Yeah, I, I don't think we're there on the allocation. I think we've got.
You're sitting back down, and I have one more question for you, Tom. I just, if we're going to take more time, I guess my question is, if we're going to take more time to and that, that, this may be a very, I'm just speaking out loud, this may not be a good idea, and I'm, I'm okay if it's, it's a terrible idea, it might be a terrible idea, but if we, if we had, if we knew that there was a majority council support, that we wanted to go to ballot, and we wanted to combine the two questions, and so we already therefore answered quite a few of the questions that we already asked in the first questionnaire that only got ninety-three responses. I'm just wondering if we may want to consider the possibility, and can we, in such a short timeframe, consider the possibility of another questionnaire, which basically says, do you want to spend it on A, arts and culture and transportation? Or B, housing? Or C, something else? Something, and so very simple, very straightforward, because we did get some feedback that there was some confusion around that. So I just wanted to throw that out there as, ninety-three responses is not very enlightening to me, and it's a little bit disappointing, and I wish it was more like five hundred. Maybe that's high in the sky, but.
It's, it's not. I mean, you know, I mean, it's not a very sexy topic. We, we had five hundred plus responses for parking, and that was why, why, and, and just the nature of the beast, right? But, but to answer your question, yeah, we can absolutely get.
We could add parking as well. I mean, I don't know, I just want to set out for consideration for council.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely do that.
It would be kind of interesting to see the answers since, because the first one was, I think, somewhat convoluted. Do you want to do it this way or this way or this way? Now we know how we want to proceed forth. It's just a question of the, basically, the TBD, you know, how are we spending it? What do you think, Councilor Bosmans?
I am. You know what I'm going to say? You probably. I am, you know what I'm gonna say? You probably do. I know council does not support the option for a refund on a ballot question. I'm wondering if council is interested in knowing or pulsing our community, if they would be interested during a survey for a refund option.
I would be, I would be fine to add that as a question, or at the very end, do you want a refund of $135 per utility user? But it's a survey, I'm, I'm, but that's my, that's my own opinion, but you guys chime in, because I'm seeing some, maybe not, not agreeing.
Honestly, I'm not agreeing per se. It's more that I really want to know and get a pulse as to where our residents want the lodger's tax spent in future years. And if you give them that option, a lot of them will choose that option, especially if it's not clear as to, this is not a sales tax, we are refunding you. We didn't overcollect sales tax. We didn't overcollect something our residents paid. We overcollected lodger's tax from what we guessed that we would collect. Does that make sense? And, and so that's my only concern about that.
It's interesting, though, because the survey might provide us some insight, because we're still going to the electors. They have the choice in the end, anyway, on ballot or on survey.
A hundred people, yeah, is, is not a reason, is not the basis for making a decision that affects 18,000 people. So personally, I think that's one of the reasons why we are elected officials, is that we have to take responsibility for seeing the big picture and where the city's going and make some of these decisions. So I'm, I'm comfortable with, with the ballot language question and maybe getting some options on, some input on where it's spent. But I'm, I'm not confident that we'll get enough answers. Like, if we got a thousand answers, that would make a difference. I don't know.
And the shorter the survey, the better. In survey, more people will take it typically. So there's also that, and I don't know. I'm just more worried about, like, housing, or as is minus marketing. That's kind of, that's what I kind of care about, or what else, if that makes sense.
So I'd just like to say that I'm interested in getting a sense of, down the road, a potential reallocation of the whole lodger's tax, and I see this as an opportunity. So I am interested in keeping it relatively straightforward with the 2021 and 22. And as said, the, the information will be in the resolution, the information there on the screen will be in the pros and cons. And I, in my own case, we're hearing very strongly that people are leaving town for issues. And I recognize the Lexus of housing and transportation, I recognize that as well. But I also feel as though we need to get a sense of what might be appealing. But I also will say that the numbers of a response have not been overwhelming. And so I think ultimately, the decision will rest with us.
Agreed, will rest with us. But I think I'm hearing support for potentially another survey then, on, on, without the refund question, but with the other options. So very simple. What do you think, Tom?
It's up to you. Sounds great. I just, just need some clarity, really, and just if, if there's a, I guess, a consensus on council in terms of the issues, the topics.
We need, we need to hear from the city attorney about the schedule of how to incorporate a potential second survey into the, and then into another reading, and into a discussion of purpose for the, for the allocation, and then another reading.
This is a resolution that only requires one reading, but it can be adopted on the 16th. So if you wanted to have survey, it would be available to you prior to 16th.
Can you get a survey and information back to us before the 16th?
We can definitely get one put out, and I'm sure that, I'm sure the business community in the state will be willing to help. I think the main thing, just again, is just making sure we're all clear on exactly what we want included on that survey. That's where I'm struggling right now.
We could do that, handle that one of two ways. We could, we could send a response, you know, we could email by like tomorrow at a certain time, but I'm seeing it very, very simple. I'm seeing it, keep, A, keep it at the, the allocations as directed on the, as, that we approved, minus, minus marketing. So arts and culture, transportation, and other, correct? So that would be one. At least that's what I'm hearing majority support for. B would be housing. And C would be other.
I'm just with housing right now, so, but I'll, I'll take anything that you can do, that you can suggest. I'm happy to look at it.
Or housing, I would avoid other again. I would maybe do, since most of the other options were, the first one, I don't want to do housing or property.
Sure. And several people have mentioned that.
So it sounds like sending you guys a draft.
Yeah, I'd agree.
A good, yeah, and quickly, this says we don't have much time, but I think it's gonna be as simple as those three options, housing, parking, keep it at, at the allocations that we have previously directed, minus marketing.
Councilor Baxter?
I, go ahead, and you guys decide what this looks like. I, I, I don't think we're gonna get enough of response to warrant the time spent by staff, so.
So coming up on the, on August 16th, we do need to have some more feedback and reach a consensus to, or a decision, actually, to, to follow your timeline for the purpose of the, the excess funding, the 1.2 million. That will, that's what council will need to do by August 16th, on August 16th. Now we're at item 13.2, discussion and possible action regarding a resolution to amend the 2022 budget. We've got, Dirk, you mentioning it, but does the city manager also endeavor need to present that?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that first present. It's Devin on that one. I think it just might be the way that, the way, the way that laid out, so it's Devin.
Sorry.
No worries. However, Dirk, if you'd like to present on a mid-year budget adjustment, I welcome your participation.
I don't want to cut into Devon's.
That layout is a little odd. It's a little off in this layout.
Absolutely. Devin Schmidt, Budget and Strategic Plan Officer for the City of Durango, here to present the 2022 mid-year budget adjustment for city council's consideration this evening on the resolution that was included in the agenda packet. So the strategic alignment is financial excellence and high-performing government. Just wanted to talk about some highlights in the 2022 mid-year budget adjustment that's before council. So the general fund reflects an increase in revenue projection over the 2022 adopted budget, and the amount of 765,831. 2015 sales tax fund has an additional appropriation request for the design services for Lake Night Horse entrance, and the water decam, decam, see Dirk, I could use your help, decontamination station, and the lap lane pools. That's due to bids coming in higher on that particular project. Airport has an increase due to increased fuel and natural gas prices, as well as additional appropriations for airport projects. Trash and recycle reflects a 10% CPI increase in the tipping fees at the transfer station. Transportation has received Chrisa and ARPA funding for one-time expenses, along with multimodal options grant. And the request includes an increase to fuel cost, credit card usage at the meters, leading to an additional credit card fees and a slight increase in items due to the reorganization of departments. And the internal service funds for warehouse security cameras, an ice resurfacing machine, or Zamboni, a SWAT van for PD, switches and PC replacements, and the technology replacement fund, and roof and building improvements out of the building maintenance fund. And then finally, areas where we're looking to reduce project budgets are in the 2019 sales tax fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. Those are projects that will not be encumbered in the 2022 budget. The mid-year budget adjustment also includes some personnel-related items. So we have new positions for FTEs, so we have a request for accounting manager, a financial analyst, the conversion of a vacant full-time position to a full-time accountant, which is currently part-time, digital evidence technician, and the conversion of a legal coordinator position to an assistant city attorney in November of 2022, as well as one internal promotion for an assistant city manager. The fiscal impacts that are included in your packet for the resolution include, in the general fund, $1,129 coming out of the fund balance. No net effect on the grant fund, since that's a transfer, an increase for the housing fund of $62,066. And the 2015 sales tax, a reduction in the fund balance of $100,000. The 2019 sales tax fund will increase by 2.5 million. In the airport construction fund, it would be 3.6 million effect on fund balance. Water construction fund would reflect a $5 million increase back into fund balance. The sewer construction fund is at 1.2 million, general services fund, $16,000 reduction in that fund. And then in the surf fund, $434,500. The technology replacement fund is $195,000. The building replacement fund is $145,000. In the airport fund, we have $101,148, trash and recycle, $10,000, and the transportation fund, $257,715 initially, but that are grant-funded, so those dollars will come back into that fund balance. So it is a recommendation of the Budget and Strategic Plan Officer that the City of Council by motion approve the budget resolution for 2022 mid-year budget adjustments for the City of Durango. The fiscal impacts are included on the previous slide, as well as in the resolution materials provided. And again, that strategic alignment brings us back to financial excellence and high-performing government. At this time, I can certainly answer any questions to council.
Council?
Thank you for the presentation. I have three questions for you. I'll try to be quick, because time is ticking away. On the agenda item, there's one, on your first page, you have the list, summary list of sales tax, the first page of your presentation. Oh, sorry, the third page, I guess, this one. In the agenda, there's another line item in that same block that says, one of the items being to provide greater transparency, tracking, and make corrections, as well as follow best practices around governmental accepted accounting principles, adjustments to the blah, blah, blah. Is that, why is it in the agenda and not on that sheet, or is this, is there a cost associated with that line item?
The 765,831, that's the question.
Say that again. If I look at the agenda, there is this list, but there is another adjustment bullet that says to provide greater transparency, tracking, and make corrections, as well as follow best practices around governmental accepted accounting principle adjustments to the 2022 adopted budget are, that's in the agenda package that's online.
Yes, and so that's just a summary explaining the list of budget adjustments and, and the request, that that's the reason, some of the reasoning behind why we're bringing forward the resolution.
Okay. All right. Next one. The surf fund, it shows a SWAT van for police department, $285,000. Is that replacement equipment or new equipment? Do we have a SWAT van, or is that a completely new?
So this would be a new, this would be a new vehicle to police. And so I'd be happy to invite Chief or Cynthia or Jared up to discuss the financing mechanism behind it, but that would be a new request.
I'd just like to interrupt just for a moment, if I may. The chief did present this. The city manager had this come to council, as he has with any big expense like this. So it was several months ago, I remember drilling the, the chief myself on the, so I want to make it very clear that this has come, this item has come before council before.
I don't think that's the question.
That's not the question, and I, I appreciate it. It was a very nice presentation, chief. The question is, why is that SWAT van under replacement equipment from a surf fund that is funded by transfers from replacement?
So Jared's, I'll let Jared speak to it.
So in this case, we are financing it out of the surf fund. And the, we will make a loan repayment program for repayment over the next, the life of the vehicle. That way, the general fund doesn't take the initial capital hit, and then it will be paid for over time. So, and then at the end of it, it will be fully paid for, fully paid back, and we will have money to replace that vehicle at the end of its useful life.
So I, I will follow up during later moments, but the surf fund, the, is equipment replacement, and in the beginning, I was explaining, it's for a transfer, no depreciation. It is a transfer that's from existing equipment from the existing funds, let's say, water fund, to accumulate money for the replacement of that equipment. And the surf fund has to have portions specific to those underlying funds to make sure we follow the legislation and the rules, because you can't just use enterprise funds for other purposes. And this may require more follow-up. Maybe I'll just leave it as a question, if council is supportive of staff providing a little bit more detail of how this is structured, so we make sure we're in compliance with the regulations.
Well, I'm, I'm confused, because originally, I thought that the way we explained this about how this worked was new purchases were purchased by the department, and replacement purchases were funded by the department into the surf and then purchased through the surf for replacements. Am I misunderstanding that?
That is correct.
So this is not following that process?
There is, if you recall, Mayor and Council, there is a fund balance in the surf fund. And so what we're doing is using that fund balance to loan this replacement through, to which it will pay for the replacement, but also then allow PD to repay that back and fund it through. So that is the reason why that it's here, is we did have a fund balance in our surf fund, as most of y'all are aware, and this is a way of being able to use that from the contributions that had been paid for from the general fund, specifically the police department, as part of that fund balance in the surf fund.
Excellent. Thank you.
I, I have a question for the city manager on that. That surf fund balance is high, and I don't think we can bring, spend it down pretty anytime soon. Would it make sense to calculate how much would, could go back to each department on a pro-rata form? So, and then to maybe set a goal of making two-thirds of that fund balance or something, give that money back, then the departments have money that they can spend for capital purchases, which would not be a loan.
Yes, Mayor, I believe that would be something that we can look into. What we are finding out is, is we've placed fleets underneath the finance department, is that there were some items that were in the replacements schedule that were not included in the master sheet. So finance is actually going through and looking at our fleet department, as well as our surf fund, to make sure that we have captured every piece of equipment that does need to be replaced. It does seem that there were some larger items that may have been missed. And what I'm saying is, we need more time to make sure that we're getting through with all of those purchases in there. So we're being cognizant of how much fund balance that we're using before we refund over. We'll definitely have more information as we get into the budget portion of our budget retreat in October to explain the surf fund in that portion of what we were able to find.
And does this have to be purchased now? Is there some kind of urging issue? Or could it wait once you have a better sense of the surf balance, and if there could be any possible refunds to the departments?
I don't think that would affect the, the purchase of this vehicle, whether there's a refund to the departments or not, because the refund would go back in a general fund balance, and that's where it would go if there was some general fund balance in, motion into it. I believe the situation here is the long lead time that we have within the SWAT van. And Chief, if you wouldn't mind speaking in regards to what that timeframe is, but because of the, the lead time that's with it, is the portion of putting our order in now, because I believe it's nine to 12 months out before we'd actually receive it.
That's correct.
Other questions on the, on the mid-year budget adjustments?
Yeah, I have one more topic. Yeah, I have one more topic, but I want to finish on the surf fund question. There's, there not necessarily need to loan it from the surf fund. We could have used another fund, like the general fund, because the amount is really not significant compared to the fund balance in the different general fund as well. Just a suggestion to keep the surf fund. And on top of it, maybe you do not recall, but we had transfer from the surf fund to technology fund and to the building fund, which also will be a question that I will ask later, is how can we use funds that were paid for specific equipment replacement from a specific fund, although some transfer that to completely different use? But I'll leave that for the next time. The next topic I have is that capital projects. It seems that, thank you, chief. It seems that various projects that were budgeted for 2022 were not taking place, and that results in, the fund balances are getting backed. I think the sewer was, and sewer and the water were two of them, quite, quite high refunds into that. And those costs obviously not taking place. Now, my question is, would it be possible to get the same list of all capital projects that we discussed in 2021 and budgeted for, for 2022, updated to show which projects have, have been completed or will be completed this year? And which ones will be moving forward to 2023, which is basically shown on your fund balance? And my, my preference would be to have that as an intermediary overview update before the capital projects discussion takes place for next year. So we have a bit of an understanding of staff workload, because if they're going to get the projects from last year, this year, that are not being completed, on top of everything that we're, that's going to maybe be a lot. Yeah, so just to see that, where are we going with this?
And just to comment on that. So once the, if should council approve the resolution, the next step would be to amend the budget in OpenGov. And so that is an area where anyone could see the 2022 actuals for projects, the amended budget, so you'll see the adopted, the amended column. And then for 2023, a lot of the projects, that's part of that reconsideration and the reappropriation process. So we could certainly provide a follow-up for council with the list of the CIP as it stands after, if should council approve the amendment.
So I'm asking something not about this amendment, yet just an overview of all the projects that were approved last year for this year, and then maybe a mid-year, like now, around this time.
I believe what you're saying is, Council Bosmans, is that when you approve the amendment, those changes will be reflected in OpenGov, which we use for our CIP updates that we give to the council. So then you will be able to see that on there.
Oh, okay, got you. If you could send me a PDF, for me, that's a lot easier, or the link to the query.
And in regards to the surf fund, I know we have extended to you a couple of times an invitation to meet with staff to discuss those concerns that you had brought up previously. And I just want to make sure you know that invitation still stands. So anytime you'd like to meet with us, we can definitely go over any of the concerns you have on that surf fund.
Yeah, no, I asked for data, and I'll look, I will get the data. Maybe ask questions, it's not going to be that relevant. But the CAFER, how far are we on the comprehensive annual financial report?
It's actually the annual comprehensive financial report. They've changed the name for it, so just to make sure. And we are on track, no, excuse me, we're on track. It is with our auditors right now as we speak, and we should be getting it back here from them in a couple of weeks into the month.
Very good, thank you.
I had a question on the water CIP. The three, three milli gallons, three MG tank. Why is that not being done? Is that because we didn't get bids on it? What's, what's happening with that? It's a $3 million project.
I defer to Justin Elkins, our utilities manager.
Nice, nice part in the paper, Anya.
Oh, thank you. So that is a project that we have been working with Bohannon Houston and trying to get designed done for, I believe, since 2014 or 2016. So we have finally got a change order done. We're moving into the design with Bohannon Houston. But the money that we had in that account was for the full construction of that tank. So we have moved the construction funds out to '23, '24, and for this year, just as I.
Okay, great, thank you. You had, your second column in this list you sent us is recurring. Do you, the sales tax revenue forecast over 2022 is in the recurring column? Are you counting on that to be over forecast every year? Or what do you mean by recurring?
So with that, sales tax, we were anticipating, because we had budgeted 18.8 million in the adopted budget for sales tax. I do not believe, and don't quote me on that, because anything could change tomorrow with that. But we do not believe on our preliminary forecast that we would stay at that 18.8, that we would be more into the 19 millions. And so that's why we listed it as recurring, that we were thinking that we're actually going to continue that 19 million upward trajectory.
So for 2023 and 2024?
Um, possibly. I think '23 and '24, it depends. I mean, as we discussed in the study session, we are reflecting a lower.
But this isn't really recurring. It's a 2022 increase.
The 2022 increase is where, because it's coming in higher than budgeted. So in 2023, we would say that we would be budgeting flat, because it's a recurring, that we would be budgeting what we perceive that we're going to get in 2022 actual. So that would recur over to the next line item.
Okay, that's, that's kind of interesting. There's a printing adjustment correction of $3,500, it's recurring?
Yes, and so what, on human resources, that was a correction error where printing was not budgeted for. If council recalls, it was in the '21 or '22 budget process where printing was decentralized out of information technology. And so that was an area where we didn't have printing budgeted for. And with human resources being a smaller department, they're very tight and on track with their budget, so we added that component.
Okay. So the downtown Durango construction site stability monitoring, 50% split with community development, $30,000. Are we recovering that from the contractor?
Yes.
Okay, so, and we still don't know anything about what they're doing with that hole in the ground that was talked about earlier today. Excellent, thank you. Okay, that's, that's all my questions, thank you.
Other questions from council? Devin, first of all, I want to thank you, you and the finance team for putting this together. It's great to have it in such a thorough manner, and also to get it prepped, to understand what's coming. I have a question for the city attorney, because we have item 13.2. We have a recommendation to approve the resolution, but we also have it under item 13.
That's a different.
That's to amend.
That's a different.
Okay.
There are two resolutions.
I understand, yeah.
This particular resolution will be our 2022-34.
And if I can just provide a little bit of background in regards to the reason for the two different ones. 13.5 deals with the Lake Night Horse Pipeline Project, which, if you recall, as we went through our budget discussions in the retreat, we did not have a council consensus on that item. So I did not want to place it in the mid-year adjustment with other things that we saw as routine. This is something that I believe the council needed to discuss separately to make sure that there may be a consensus on it this time.
Perfect, thank you.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2022-34.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, can, can we confirm that the use of funds from the surf fund for the acquisition of equipment, new equipment, is conform our charter and our rules?
Yes.
Okay. That was not a straight note there. Could you elaborate on that, or is that inappropriate?
He will confirm that.
Oh, he will confirm.
Yes.
Oh. So I, if we cannot confirm it now, is it a bit problematic to approve it? If it's not certain if it's conforming?
No.
I'm looking to the city attorney on that.
I, if I may, I believe, you know, again, that fund is governed by charter provisions, and it's governed by the city council, this board sitting here. It has done it before. It is not untoward, it's not like it's something that we haven't done before. So again, in this case, we've, we've vetted this. We talked about how to make sure the surf fund maintains or remains whole. And we will set it up in a way that it, it does, because we take that responsibility seriously, so.
Dirk, you have any?
I don't have any thoughts. I frankly am not familiar enough with the process. But, you know, to the extent that you want to approve this resolution, subject to that item being confirmed, you could do that. And then we could report back via email, because I, I'm not going to offer an opinion here without having the chance to look at it.
So can I make a friendly adjustment to the motion?
I don't, has there been a motion?
Of what?
Oh, okay.
To, wow, how do I say this?
Continuance is your option.
No, no, to, subject to clarification of the surf fund expense for new equipment, conform the charter, is that?
Yeah, I don't think it's a charter issue, because you're not really transferring money between funds, as I understand it. But again, I have a limited understanding of what's going on. So I think what they're doing is taking the surf fund, buying a piece of equipment with that, with the funds in the surf fund, and then providing for reimbursement to that fund from, you know, for that piece of equipment. So you're not moving money between various funds. And that's, and the charter would require council approval to do that. So I don't think there's a charter problem here, based on what I understand.
So, but the surf fund is to replace equipment?
Right, but the surf fund has its sort of own, you know, internal rules, which I don't, you know, again, I don't know, but.
Gets a little misty.
So it's not, again, I think, just to be clear, I don't think there's a charter issue here at all, that I can see, but I haven't investigated it.
So where, where would this be regulated? The uses of the surf fund and the financing?
I assume there may be a surf fund policy. I don't know if there is or not, I don't know.
Okay, first of all, we have a motion on the floor. There will be time for discussion, so we need to find out if we have a second to the motion. That was.
We have a motion and a second.
You did second it, okay, sorry.
This is discussion.
Yeah, sorry.
But.
I think, does anyone else have something to say during discussion?
Nope.
Let's have this vote.
Mayor Pratcham Youssef? Yes. Councilor Baxter? Yes. Councilor Bosman?
I, I'm not sure what we're voting on, so.
A motion.
But I'm, but I made a friendly amendment. Oh, okay, got you. I'll vote no, because I, or abstain is probably the best way.
Councilor Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Noserweth?
Yes. Item 13.3, discussion and possible action concerning an implied consent agreement for 170 South Skyline Drive.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow counselors. Kevin Hall, Managing Director of Community Development. This item probably is better suited for the consent agenda. It didn't make it there, so I'm going to be brief with my statements here and allow you to take some action if you choose to. We have a property in Animus Air Park, which is outside the city limits, who would like to tie into the city's water system within Animus Air Park. Because it's outside the city limits, you either need to annex in or have what is called an implied consent agreement in order to tie into the water system. The property owner is not expanding or developing the site. It's to existing facilities on their property. They will be paying a plant investment fee. They will be paying to install the service lines. They will also be paying for the water, so there's no fiscal impact on the city. So what is being asked of here is that the council authorized the city manager to execute an implied consent agreement, allowing for the property owner to connect to the city water with the conditions as stated in the staff report.
Is there a motion in the document?
There's a recommendation in the document. You don't have that on print.
I have it.
Okay. First of all, is there any questions? Of Kevin?
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion. I move to set a hearing date of August 16, 2022, to review the proposed South Fort Crater Lot 1R-R preliminary subdivision.
That's not, that's not it.
I think you want to do the authorize the city manager.
Authorizes the skyline. That's all right, it's been a long day.
Maybe, I'll try it.
Yeah, we've got it right.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an implied consent agreement, allowing the property at 170 South Skyline Drive to connect to city water with the following conditions. One, the design and connection of the utility services line shall comply with all applicable city standards. And two, if an implied consent agreement has not been executed by the city manager and the owner of 170 South Skyline Drive, this approval shall be null and void.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote.
Councilor Bosmans?
Yes.
Mayor Pratcham Youssef?
Yes.
Councilor Baxter? Yes. Councilor Beal?
Yes.
And Mayor Noserweth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the next item on our agenda is discussion, item 13.4, discussion and possible action regarding temporarily discontinuing meetings of the Community Relations Commission while the city council discusses and determines the future of board commissions. And this is council-driven. So I will start and open this up and then lay some of the situation here. So I think, first of all, I'd like to say that this is a council of five. The mayor has no authority over anyone on this council. We make decisions by consensus, and also then by, in some cases, by vote, or don't make decisions. We, we provide consensus thinking, and then ultimately make a vote. Agendas for the city council are determined by consensus. We discuss what will be on. And we also, excuse me, have an obligation, or one that we hold, try to hold ourselves to, to at a minimum have the agenda printed and, and made public 24 hours in advance. But we've been trying lately to be, have more time with that. So I'd like to say that next going into it, I think it's important to understand that the advisory boards, if you look at the org chart with the city, the advisory boards report to council. That is a function of council. And I also want to comment that the advisory boards, we've actually asked staff to make some recommendations of those advisory boards. And we discussed that at the last study session. Now, I'd also like to say that on this council, we, I can only think of 10, so I'm not certain of the 11. But we have, I can name them, and I will, 10 advisory boards, nine of which, I believe it's nine, nine of which have a liaison reporting to them. Those advisory boards are the National Lands, Creative Economy Commission, the Infrastructure Advisory Board, the Multimodal Advisory Board, the Parks and Rec, the library, the airport, Salt Fab, and the, the Community Relations Commission. The Community Relations Commission, back when Councilor Baxter was mayor, brought forward to council and requested, they had not had a liaison, and they requested a liaison from council. And there was a long history of why they probably didn't have one with it being set up back in, I think, 2014. So a resolution was actually adopted, that's Resolution R202164, which calls for there to be a liaison to an advisory board. I resigned my position as the liaison on June of 2022. To date, we have not been able to have a discussion. We have to have these discussions in public. We have to have a discussion of two things. If there is no liaison to the, to a board, what makes sense? And that would be any board if there was no liaison. Or is there anyone and also, is there anyone on council willing to add this board to their responsibilities? So those are the questions at hand. It is not, it is, the reason we are discussing the Community Relations Commission is because it is the one board that that I have named that does not have a council liaison and has a resolution that requires that. So I'm going to open that up if there's any other council member that wanted to add to that comment. I also would like to say, I recognize the good work that's been done by the Community Relations Commission. I I really want to say that I and I singled that out between the subcommittees, the working groups very much. I think you have to answer the question. Is it appropriate to have an advisory board that reports to this to the council with no council liaison? I'm sorry, but this is, this is, we're not in public discussion right now. This is a council. This is a, this is a council, yes, this is a council discussion. I will also say that we made a recommendation of, it has been a recommendation that each council can do what they wish, that we consider the workload, please. I have provided, and I will also say my resignation, which I don't want to go into, is fully documented as a public document and on board. And it explains why I chose to leave this board. So let me ask if, first of all, I can ask, is there any council member? Because this is our our opportunity is in a forum. Is there any council member willing to serve us a liaison?
I am, I I think maybe some background because this, the the question to put this on the agenda was put was out yesterday or two days ago by Council Baxter and you all supported it. And so I I didn't know the background of why it was on the on the agenda. And maybe other people were aware of that.
I was asked to ask to have it polled to see whether or not it would be on the agenda. I I have no problem with the question being on the agenda. But as I mentioned at the time, I see no reason why this board can't continue meeting, even if they don't have a liaison. They function perfectly well for years that way. And I, we will be making a decision, I'm hoping fairly soon, so all the boards and commissions questions get resolved. So I I don't really see the need to put them on pause. And I said that at the time, you weren't in that conversation, but that's my perspective on it.
But I think it's important to recognize that as a council, we have to ask ourselves questions. It doesn't mean restating our position, but we are asking the question. You have a resolution that requires a, that that states that there will be a liaison. This is the only board that does not have a liaison. And to date, without having this open discussion, is anyone willing to be the liaison? We have to discuss this in an open forum. It does not, I don't think anyone's put their position out there.
So I asked Dirk earlier if it required a liaison to be there for the meetings to occur. And Dirk, would you please say what you told me?
I said this resolution requires council to appoint a liaison. And it, I'll I'll read what it says. Shall the city council shall annually annually appoint a member of council to serve as a non-voting voting council liaison to provide assistance to the commission and to provide an active channel of communication between city council and commission to further the missions and initiatives of the commission. So an answer to the question is, you know, for instance, if a liaison is absent for a meeting, does that preclude a meeting? I think the answer to that is no. It does not preclude a meeting. This is a little different situation, I suppose, in terms of you have one, you know, you don't have one at all to serve that role. And it is a shall appoint language. So council is required under this resolution to appoint a liaison.
But it doesn't say that the board can't meet if the council has not appointed a liaison.
You're right, it doesn't say that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Uh, Jose, please. So we talked about our boards and commissions, our last study session. And we briefly, we we did talk about as a separate item, the Community Relations Commission. Um, and we talked about looking into the possibility of of next steps with that commission. How, what is our timeline around researching that possibility and looking into that further? And can we prioritize that?
Definitely can prioritize it. I still have to have conversations with the school district, Chamber of Commerce, Fort Lewis bid on those. Obviously, uh, towards the end of last week, I was out of town. So I haven't had an opportunity to do that and have a a lot portion on a on our plate, but we definitely can move it up. I have not been able to make progress in reaching out to those entities at this time yet.
Right, because you haven't had, I mean, this is how all happening back to back. There's a lot of issues going on, but I'm just wondering, given the, um, you know, given that this seems that seems to be rising to a more high priority topic. And I'm wondering if if we could reach out to those entities because, you know, I I'm only one counselor. But I liked that idea of the community wide discussions taking place in a collaborative way with the Community Relations Commission. And I am wondering if that might, you know, I'd I'd like to see us moving towards that more quickly than having these discussions, which aren't going to help us propel any of the movements that the Community Relations Commission is working on forward. At all, so I I I guess I'm trying to figure out how we get to that next position and how quickly we can get there to move us forward.
Definitely, I can start reaching out this week if that's the will of the council to move this up higher. With some of those, though, it's going to depend on the responses I receive back from the other organizations and in their timeframe in regards to how does it, how does it make out for them?
Right.
But definitely can reach out and start making those movements this week.
I would also support that. I feel like, as we know, we have double the boards and commissions as any community our size. We were already pushing for consolidation and restructuring. And this, that was an idea that I think council agreed to and have Kevin look into more. Um, and so I would push for, um, uh, forward with staff, the recommendation of starting, whether it's a new Community Relations Commission with nine R, Fort Lewis County Chamber, whatever it is. Restructuring maybe sooner than the rest of the boards. Just so, because the commission served, all boards and commissions serve at the will of council. There's no council liaison, that's a little bit difficult. Is Melissa Porch still a member of?
Melissa?
Yes, okay, so there's a city representative of that.
So I I guess I want to make certain that council has discussed this and has a consensus and it, I don't believe a vote is necessary.
I wanted to say something before.
Oh, no, go ahead, please.
I think by having put this on the agenda, I had shot such notice with unclear, to me, it creates a lot of friction, concern, especially from this board. And I think maybe we should, at least I I wanted to say I support this board. I think you represent an important group of people, marginalized, diverse, uh, who you are, where you're from, and it needs a voice and it needs a voice to counsel. You make recommendations. It's still up to us to do whatever with and justify to our voters. So I wanted to just first put that out there because I think it's important. I also think, if I am not mistaken, several people of this board, commission, I guess it's called, serve also on the nine R board, is that correct? I see one one head nod. So I'm not sure where we're going to by combining everything. And even if, and the point is on continuing or not this this board, that's the agenda item. So maybe the first direction is we continue until we have decided something else with the whole boards and commissions. And then we'll have a broad discussion or.
So, so can I, I would like to make it clear, one thing is, um, the one, because it's a resolution and so we're, we want to be very clear here. Are we, first of all, is anyone interested in, for however long it may be, uh, serving as the liaison to this board?
When is the, no, I'll I'll step up to the plate. When is the next? Not saying yes.
The me, there, now you have a liaison.
No, I I was going to ask you, when is the, because we were supposed to go through the boards and commission liaison list pretty much April, May, and we are in August now, isn't that what we did?
No, we had decided to do it at a two year interval, so it would be in twenty twenty with the new commissioners, any new commissioners that come on. Twenty twenty three, that would be, so it's a two year assignment. No, we decided a two year.
Didn't, we decided we'd do it every year, but the two year term for some of the boards was more advantageous than others. Because, for example, like Salt Fab, it's possible that you wouldn't, in one, in one year, you wouldn't, you know, it's not, doesn't make sense to change. But we didn't make it like a, we didn't vote that it would be a two year term.
In any case, you would likely serve at least until, you know, we all know that there's elections in April of twenty twenty three. And at that point, typically, you would, you would reevaluate.
And when is the date?
The meetings are the fourth Wednesday of the month from four, excuse me, the fourth Wednesday of the month from four to about five thirty, sometimes six o'clock.
I guess, uh, I'll I'll commit to it, but I will not be there all the time. But I'm also going to skip some of the other, so I'll just switch it back and forth.
Thank you, we now have a liaison and we are in compliance with our resolution. And I think it's very important, I'd really like to emphasize that, I think you watched a process.
No.
I think you watched a process of deliberation on a dais to reach, uh, ultimately a a very favorable outcome. Thank you, and thank you, Councilor Bosmans, for stepping up.
Well, I guess I'm the only immigrant here.
Next item. Item thirteen point four, discussion and possible action concerning a resolution to amend the twenty twenty two budget.
Actually, to go back for a moment, Councilor Bosman's brought up a really good question, which is, are we going to have that discussion about liaisons? So.
I think that we, um, we can probably under, uh, council reports and actions, we can probably decide and make a consensus to add that to an agenda item, we need to, but I think we should do it under council reports and actions.
Well, good evening, Mayor and, uh, counselors. I know everybody's, uh, wearing thin and I wish I could say this was a really short discussion. I will try and be succinct, but this is going back to almost a year ago. When I first started, we were doing CIPs and I really did not have at that point enough information to provide a real strong case for why we needed a pipeline from late night horse to College Mesa Water Treatment Plant. So we have worked, um, while Jared was there, he was deeply involved with the discussion and myself. And we've worked with Dave Ferguson, our water plant manager. And, um, now with Mountain Studies Institute, we worked with Jake Kurzwell Wheel, excuse me, who's a hydrologist, and Scott Roberts, who was their project manager. And Justin has stepped in. So we're getting a much more comprehensive approach to the discussion rather than just, we we need it because we have water rights there. So, um, this really does focus tonight on, um, the the storage capacities and our access to storage capacities. The water, Colorado Water Conservation Board is a division of the Colorado Department of Natural Resources. Uh, they dictate funding for priorities with federal dollars. Their statement, um, recently, specifically regarding Durango, was that the Pagosa Springs Bayfield Durango Corridor is rapidly growing and while experiencing, while experiencing areas of localized water shortages. In addition, they, they, their comment was that the existing reservoirs storing municipal and industrial water lack infrastructure to deliver water to treatment plants and distribution systems. So this was really pretty specifically related to the discussion that we were having about the late night horse pipeline for raw water supply. So the storage is a major priority for the Southwest Basin. This is a comprehensive Colorado conservation. It's not just a local, um, statement. This is something that we're dealing with statewide. And at the same time, they have actually called out Durango Corridor as part of a corridor that in need of, um, localized water shortage responses. So this is our water system. Our watershed, can, system consists of the Florida watershed, which is our primary driver. It's the Florida River in orange over here. The red is the larger Animus watershed. And the little blue is our current, um, raw water pipeline. So a couple of items related to that. Our primary watershed is the Florida, even though it's smaller, we're getting, uh, better quality and larger volumes of water there. The current storage capacity at Terminal Reservoir is approximately ten days at peak demand. We are, through this, this process, actually totally reliant on stream flow. We have at peak season, ten days worth of water, um, that is available in a reservoir. Otherwise, we have no wells, we don't have additional storage access. So we're highly dependent on stream flow.
Just, just to clarify, when you say stream flow, you only mean on the Animus River? Because the Florida River is fed from Lemon Reservoir.
Which is fed from stream.
But it's, it's a reservoir that is let.
We have water rights on the Florida River, not on Lemon Reservoir.
Yeah, the 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 city's water rights are senior to the reservoir. So, um, this city has the ability to call out storage in the reservoir.
But what I'm trying to say is, we have that as a reservoir from which we pull the the water volume, the flow from the Florida.
It's the native flow through the reservoir that we.
Well, it comes out of the reservoir.
Yeah, well, yes, it goes through the reservoir.
There is a reservoir there, but we're not assured that we can have anything other than our water rights flowing through the reservoir.
Gotcha.
There are other components, other, other rights established there. So, um, in looking at this, we figured there were basically, uh, system risk. Number one, aging infrastructure jumped up and bit us in the tail at end of December, January to make it highly obvious that our seventy year old, um, Florida water line has some significant issues that we need to, um, be aware of. This was over in Timberline Drive, right beside, um, right off of Florida Road. We have a pattern of drought and aridification, which has, uh, pretty consistent support that I'll go through and provide more information on. We are having a wonderful. We are having a wonderful monsoon season, and I think it's just amazing that the last time I came and gave you a drought report, like the next day, the monsoons came, so I appreciate that. And beyond that, we have the potential for unplanned mine release into Animus River. And finally, wildfire is a risk to our watershed system. So these, this is just sort of a little peek at our Florida pipeline failures since 2003. And this is number of days of pipeline failure. And obviously, 2021 throws for a bit of a loop, but it's not the first time that there has been a problem that's required taking it offline. Currently, we do have a section of pipeline in Edge Mountain Ranch that is exposed due to erosion, and we're planning to repair that this, this year, which again, may bring the pipeline offline temporarily, but we have some flexibility on when we can accomplish that. It's a 70-year-old cast iron pipe. We do not have full location data. The most recent break, we did actually bring ground print penetrating radar in to locate the pipe, so that we could actually find where it had failed. So it's one of, one of actually two pipelines that we're talking about. But the risk to our system is increased by the potential for pipeline failure through the Florida, and that's a nine-mile pipeline. So Florida River, we've seen changes over the, over the years. We start at, looking at 1980 and going through 2020. There is a significant downward trend to precipitation. Reasonably follows that there is a reduction over the years in the runoff depth, which combined creates a less effective watershed. In other words, it can rain more and we still have less water going into the Florida River that we have access to. It's just a part of the process that we're going through as the aridification of our environment continues. So I look at the trend lines as important. These are confidence level of 95%, above 95%. So these are solid numbers that we can say are statistically significant. Personally, what I look at with this more than the trends, which are certainly visible and should be considered, is that there's a lot of extreme years, where we're extremely high or extremely low. And the fact is, we do have to be ready to treat water those years, regardless of what the trend is doing. And we see a lot of movement over the years, up and down. But those are the constraints that we're working with. So in the Animus River, the, there again is a downward trend. These are less than 95%, so technically, they're not statistically significant at this point. But again, we have tremendous variation in year to year. Our extremes are high, our highs are high, lows are lows, with both precipitation runoff and then the effective rate of recharge to the river. Another component of the aridification, I think everyone has heard that we were a month early this year on our snow melt. The zero snow day is the number of days out into the water year that the 0% snowpack remains. So Stump Lake is in the Florida watershed, and there is a meter there with Snowtail. This is where we've gotten our data. And in 2022, we were a month ahead of average on snow melt. So that was noteworthy. The snow melt, for various reasons, we don't, not having as much accumulation to begin with, and additional dry conditions create dust storms that then darken the snow, so that it absorbs more heat from the sun's light, which reduces the time that the, the snow is available as to us as flow in the river. Because if it's, the snow melt's gone in May, then we start dropping our flows in the river. So Stump Lake relates to Florida, Moles Pass relates to Animus River, and Viasito relates to common knowledge, I think, that people have as sort of a mental benchmark of the most visible of our local lakes that people tend to see. So that one was in there for general information. Okay. So this one's a little complicated, so I'm just going to stick to the very top level. Santa Rita Pump Station draws from the Animus River. We don't have a specific number that tells us when the pumps cannot be used. In sort of general parlance, we've said, system-wide, the operators tend to agree that at 100 CFS, we're in a position where we need full-time monitoring of the pumps, and it's, it's reached the critical point at that time. So we're, at that point, we're concerned. So the number of days with less than 100 CFS in the Animus. Prior to 2010, the Animus flowed for 100 years with only two days reporting less than 100 CFS. In the past five years, more than 30 days reported with less than 100 CFS. The color coding here at month one, two, three, obviously are January, February. Over on this side, we're looking at the 100 CFS and below. So in the 1910s or teens, whatever you want to call, there were two. And since 2010, we've been hitting them consistently for 30 days. So it's been, it's, the, the problem is increasing with flows in the Animus being low at various times, in spite of the fact that we have very senior rights. There's a limit to what you can do with water rights if there's no water there. Next potential risk is unplanned mine release. We do have one EPA Superfund site in the Animus watershed, which is disturbing. It's, it would not have been designated a Superfund site if it were not a significant problem. And most recent unplanned mine releases were Gold King Mine in 2015, Silver Wing in 2020, and Frisco Bagley Tunnel in 2021. So currently, 48 mines in the Bonita Peak Mining District Superfund are shown here as red dots. There are an estimated 10,000 additional abandoned mines in the region that may or may not become part of the Superfund listing. Next component of risk is wildfire. Wildfires are increasing in frequency with increased drought. Over on the left-hand side, you'll see the percent of La Plata County that's currently in a drought condition from 0 to 100. And the drought conditions, we are currently at moderate drought. But as you can see, over the last few years, we've spent a lot of time in extreme drought and exceptional drought. And that's when the fires have been occurring. Missionary Ridge was in 2003 during a exceptional drought period. Lightner and Air Park during a severe drought condition for 100% of the county. Going on, Lightner Creek, 358 fire, the 416, 441, and most recently, the ICE fire in 2020. So surprisingly to me, the rate of fish kill from 416 fire was infinitely greater than the fish kill from Gold King spill. So even though the mine releases look extremely disturbing, and you think of, well, the fire ash as sort of a natural product, it, it has much more impact on wildlife due to the dissolved carbon and the oxygen requirements that that takes. So local wildfire risk, this is La Plata County, just a specific map. Obviously, we stay pretty high in there. Our watershed in this map to the right, the gray is the Animus, and the light blue is the Florida. So the consequences of fire, of wildfire on water treatment are the increased treatment costs to deal with degraded water quality, excessive manganese, which is a metal, can cause growth of microorganisms that are problematic for treatment. We had issues that grow, grow out of that for our water, wastewater treatment process. And increased dissolved organic carbon may form unwanted byproducts that during disinfection process can chemically recombine and create chloroform and trihalomethanes, which are both carcinogens. So they're pretty serious items. Much of the watershed is in high or very high risk of wildfire. 12.39% of Florida watershed above Lemon has burned since 2020, since 2002. 17% of Animus watershed has burned since 2002. 441 fire in 2019 occurred on Missionary Ridge Burn Scar. So just because something's burned once doesn't mean it can't burn again. Viasito Fire in 2012 also burned within Missionary Ridge Burn Scar. So what we're looking at at this point is, we've got four, four different issues that we've talked about, and the unpredictability is challenging, because we can't actually plan when, where, how any of these things are going to occur. So what we have is an opportunity to mitigate the risk through additional storage. And the purchase of access to supply at Lake Nighthorse is one of the greatest advantages that the city of Durango has at this moment. We mitigate risk through that storage, but if we can't access it, then it's really not providing us the protection that we'd like over time. The four components again were aging infrastructure that relies on stream flow, statistically significant reduction in stream flow, watershed with EPA Superfund site in it. And even if the watershed is working perfectly, we still have very high risk of wildfire and potential impacts from that.
Allison?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you a quick question on that slide?
Yes.
Can you tell me how you come up with 350 days of storage in Lake Nighthorse for the Sea of Durango?
I don't have a formula with me. That's a number we have been using. I can get it back up for you with the 3,800 acre feet.
Because I, the SEH report, I only thought it was 10, 20 days, depending on the demand?
It was 90, I think, but one of the restricting factors in that has to do with how much we can actually take per day. So we may have, we may have 3,800 acre feet in Lake Nighthorse, but we can't take as much as we want whenever we want.
Right, we can't necessarily run for a year consistently.
Right, so.
There, yes.
I, I think it was 90 days. Jared, does that seem what you remember too?
It depends on how we use it.
Right. But that would, that would be.
That lasts us for three months. If we use it an average day, it's 3,000.
Six months.
You know, if it lasts us for six months, we could be now at most flows, average wind flow, probably almost a year now.
And still meet our requirements about how much, what the maximum is we can take per day and pump, and pump out of the river into the Lake Nighthorse also.
And there would be other subtle. Right. And presumably, if we were in that bad a condition, other rights holders within Lake Nighthorse would also be interested in accessing theirs. I think, you know, that it's, it's an estimate. It's, to me, mentally, it's a year versus a month. And it's not quite that simple, but that's what I boil it down to when I have a, a January, where we have a broken pipeline. So this is, you know, the solution that was identified by Colorado Department of Natural Resources, that they are encouraging both storage and infrastructure to access storage. MSI, working through their risk analysis and hydrology, feels that this is, you know, put their support toward this. Certainly, we have a great deal of support within utilities to, just for resilient purposes for taking down. We're looking at potentially We're looking at potentially relining or replacing the Florida water line. And it sure would be nice to have some multiple options while we're doing pieces of that. So just, you know, I would say colloquially, there's a lot of support within our utilities group for it. So just
And did you want to mention I A B's support?
Yes, I A B.
I could cover it later.
Yes, I A B did support this, this concept. There were three, three advisory board members at the, at the board meeting. And one did choose to recuse because of the potential for bidding on a project associated with this. So, but there was very positive response, I think, to this information. So just to give you an idea of what other cities, towns are doing in our area or in Colorado. Golden has a hundred eighty-seven days of storage. Montrose has two days. Grand Junction has eight hundred days. Pagosa Springs has three point two years. So it varies a lot. And we'd rather be on the three point two year end than the two days. Streams can come run dry. We don't want to be complacent, but just because we have good, very senior water rights that have seen us through all of the nineteen hundreds and even further, so, but we don't want to take that as the, the permanent answer. So funding is available. This is like the perfect moment in time for infrastructure funding. C W C B, that we spoke about earlier with the quotes, has water and store, storage and supply funds available. Includes development of additional storage, artificial recharge, things that don't apply to us, but it would be a potential funding source, grant funding source for some of the infrastructure associated with providing the pipeline from the Lake Nighthorse current valve that is shut off. It would not mean putting a new intake into Lake Nighthorse. There's already an intake that has, I believe, a thirty-six inch outlet where a manifold would be built and then we would take off with new water line. Water Supply Reserve Fund has funded water line extensions in the development of raw water supplies. Our Santa Rita pump's a good example. Bureau of Reclamation has a Water Smart Program. There's the bipartisan infrastructure bill that has opportunities for critical infrastructure funding there. This is a great time if we're going to do this. Funding scenarios, we just looked at this real briefly and we, we didn't go through this with, with I A B, but just wanted to kind of kick it out there so council could be thinking about it as we move forward. And what we're asking for with this resolution is not the whole entire thing. We're looking at five hundred thousand dollars as a mid-year adjustment to preliminary engineering to determine location, sizing, feasibility of, of the pipeline. But looking at the big picture, if we use cash funding for all C I Ps that we have on the five-year water fund plan, the water fund becomes insolvent by twenty, oh, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-five. It was a correction, twenty twenty-five typo that I missed. I caught it on an earlier version and missed it. But anyway, with bonding fund for the pipelines, we have an opportunity to continue to keep up the water fund balance, which doesn't sound immediately enticing to everybody, but it could allow the possibility of projects supporting the strategic initiatives that council has indicated an interest in. So we'll come back to that in just a minute. So briefly, cash funding C I Ps with our five-year C I P plan. End of twenty twenty-two, we're estimated at fifteen million. End of twenty twenty-three, eleven, and I'm using Devon's numbers.
And Allison, if I may just be real clear, just tonight, you want just appropriation of the five hundred thousand.
That's correct.
So I think perhaps in the interest of time, if I, if I may, I know you're going to come back to us on the sixteenth with all of your projects.
Okay.
And so I, I don't want to get us looking at this because we're still going to look at it at the sixteenth. I think the issue now is, is there support for that five hundred thousand dollar budget?
And that's fine. That really is the whole, the fund balance discussion ties in so closely with the bonding is why I always headed down that road. I have a couple more slides, but we can put it off till the sixteenth. Everybody looks like they're in pain.
Well, I also know that, well, I also know the salt fab is going to be making some recommendations about bonding as well. So I think, I think for tonight's purpose, the discussion and possible vote should be around the five hundred thousand dollar appropriation. If, if you don't mind, because
Absolutely not.
You'll come back to us on the sixteenth.
I assure you, there's, yes, lots for the sixteenth. We'll try and zoom through all public works.
So may I just, because you did speak about the I A B, and I don't want to do all of it, but I wanted to say that we had a quorum, but we did not have all five of us there. When Paul O'Neill recused himself, we did not take a vote. But I wanted to say that Dave Peters was so impressed with your and Justin's presentation that he offered to come and speak about the importance of it. And John Simpson also supported this project and raised the question of, given the data, because we also had people from Mountain Studies Institute and Fort Lewis College scientists talking about how they helped us do this analysis. He actually asked if perhaps we should be bringing that funding up sooner and looking at something like the three and a half million gallon tank is it later? So there was a real discussion there. And then the other thing I did want to bring up is there was, that group also talked about, you know, we talk about sending it to College Mesa, but is there a way to maybe send it somewhere else and get the same achievement without the same disruption? So I wanted to share with you that the I A B was engaged, they were problem solving, and they were supportive.
Can I answer any questions?
So the five hundred thousand dollars is for like identifying where the pipeline should go?
It would give a tentative route and begin to lay out where we would need right-of-way acquisition and look at a conceptual, you know, determine a pipeline size that would be appropriate for what we're looking to accomplish. We're going from Lake Nighthorse to actually our Bear Trap Pump Station, which is near Santa Rita, so it doesn't go all the way to College Mesa.
So are you, are you looking at more than one possible location for the pipeline?
I do not have a conceptual or even visualization right now of where the pipeline would best go.
But would that be one of the questions? Like, does it come from Ridge's basin or does it come from somewhere else? Or does it come from?
Right.
Be one of the questions you would be asking?
Right.
Okay, great.
We have the two endpoints and we want to find the best way to get between them.
Perfect, thank you. And the Well, the endpoint, though, it may not be the bottom of the reservoir.
Well, there is an outlet there.
I know.
Okay.
I, I've been there, I've toured it and everything, but
I do understand.
But I'm just saying, we won't just assume that we're going to do it one way. We'll, we'll make sure that we look at other potential possibilities.
Yes, and that was part of the I A B discussion that it came up. I think John Simpson brought it up, that potentially Durango Lakes has an intake of County Road two thirteen, I'm going to guess, two. Oh, oh, which road is two ten?
Right.
That might be a more accessible route, even if it's, you know, not, not this, the same outlet. So those were looked at, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
And Allison, I think you need to clarify for council that it's five hundred thousand dollars now. And then you will be coming with a C I P request for additional money to do this.
Right.
That's the one point council should be aware of.
Right. It would be
I believe it's a million and a half that you'd be proposing or something to that effect. I'm looking for Justin. Five hundred now and a possible for council discussion as part of the budget at one and a half million. And I will also add that you felt that you would take two years to get the design, all of that to go through. It would be a reasonable period.
Right, because there would be obviously multiple reviews and interactions and looking for grant funding, that kind of work would be a part of what we would be doing.
Questions for Allison, and please forgive me, council, I did want to make certain that I A B's as the liaison, that the, the discussion was fully, fully reported back to you.
Well, if there's no questions, I'd make a motion that we approve.
No, I'm not there. Questions, but I think there's discussion.
Finish my
Oh, sure.
And we could, we can second it and then have discussion too. So I would go ahead and move that we approve the resolution authorizing the amendment to the twenty twenty-two budget for the water fund in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
I'll second. Discussion. Councilor Bosman.
I think the first thing our community needs to know that our current water supply and treatment capability is about four times the average demand and about double the maximum demand. And since the supply and the treatment runs in two differences, in two rivers, two treatment systems, there is a certain amount of safety built in just, just there. And based on the S E H reports, our current supply and system is adequate for population growth for probably the next twenty years, and that is also using maximum demand, almost doubling our population. So when we look at five hundred thousand dollars as the first part of engineering and design, and I think on previous occasions, the total for engineering and design was estimated to be two point five million, which is what I still assume is the case. On top of which, the cost for the actual pipeline was previously, previously estimated to be over twenty million. So if we move forward to five hundred thousand, we're really saying we're going to spend twenty-two million. At least unless we do another study for, for the shelf. I want to be very clear that I actually believe a connection in the medium to long-term future is beneficial from Lake Nighthorse into our existing system. But to spend this kind of money now seems absolutely not understandable nor justifiable to me. The only far-fetched reason that I could come up with is that there is so much money accumulated in the waterfront, somewhere between fifteen and twenty million, that it may be hard to justify to our residents why we charge and accumulate it that much money unless we somehow spend it. It would make more sense to make such a connection from Lake Nighthorse downstream when the other right holders, the water right holders, like I think the Utes and somewhere downstream, when those entities intend to access their water and they need a connection, that would be the right timing for us to combine our efforts, sharing the costs of well over twenty million with those entities. But technically, it also doesn't make sense. Lake Nighth, you, you brought up very good points. It's all about emergency, bridging an emergency. And I think I, I really appreciate that. I wish it was a little bit more like an analysis of if this happens, are we, do we have a problem? If there's a forest fire, we don't have a problem, we have Florida. If, if, if Florida dries up, we don't have a problem because we have the Anamis River. But if everything goes together at the same time, then we have a problem. And then in which case would Lake Nighthorse water help? Because if the problem is disaster at the water treatment plant, Lake Nighthorse water will still not serve any purpose. Because it's a reservoir, it's a short, limited amount of time that we can bridge a water need, a raw water supply. And after that, we still have to pump it back up into the lake from the river. So in, in a way, it makes more sense to pump it straight from the existing pumps into the water treatment system. So that's one argument. The emergency, I think, is key and to have a better assessment internally, as you have done, but maybe a little bit more in different scenarios, which emergencies, disasters have to happen all at once and together for us to really have a problem.
I think there are an exceptional number of combinations of those four items. And the analysis would be so speculative that we can't predict which ones are, it just becomes a statistical analysis. It's very numerical and not very real world oriented.
No, but you could say, you could say the Florida provides five million gallons and Anamis River provides nine million gallons. So if the Florida River completely dries up, we have still no emergency because we have nine millions, which is two millions above our maximum daily demand. Anyway, I'll, I'll just continue here. The consensus of the I A B as, when it was a fuller board, was that the Water System Master Plan was supposed to be adopted and as a guiding document for future improvements and reliability of the water system. So I, I think two people out of that group, maybe we should, I, I hope to see first the full board, their recommendation before approving this commitment, because we're not committing five hundred thousand dollars. We've, we're really committing five hundred thousand out of two and a half thousand for design and engineering, followed, if we don't want to waste that, with a capital improvement project that's twenty million. So we're talking not five hundred thousand, we're talking about the pathway we're on if we go that route. And to me, it's all about timing. I actually think the connection is very important at a, at a certain point in time. When does it make sense? And to me, it would be when other entities want to tap into that water and we combine our efforts. Or we see the trends with our water use, which is going down per capita, our water demand per capita is going down. And how that evaluates over time. So our total, if our water demand stays consistent, we still have twice the capacity at maximum demand or four, four times the supply and capacity to treat.
Thank you, Councilor Bosman. Do other counselors have comments? Because I think we need to make certain that everyone has a chance to speak. Are there other questions or comments? I will have some, but I'll wait to the end.
So I wanted to speak to a couple of things. We do have more capacity to treat than we actually need to use during a day. We don't have storage capacity other than in Lake Nighthorse. We have ten to thirty days of storage capacity in College Mesa. And I think that that's the biggest troubling issue that we have to deal with. If we are in a situation, even if we are doing major, major conservation and we end up with only thirty days of capacity, I don't, that's probably not best practices. And, you know, we could have a discussion about that, about what's best practice, you know, six months? A year? What, two years, three years?
Right.
Right. And I think that that's really key to the, the whole conversation here. Both Barbara and I were very, very critical of the Lake Nighthorse plans and how they were working and with good reason, because there was another water treatment plant, plan that was going to cost a fifty million dollars more than we needed because we do have the treatment capability. And that was key, was designing a, a, the right question. So designing the graphs that show that given population and water needs over the next, out to twenty seventy-five, we have enough capacity to treat the water that we need if we do our maintenance. We didn't need to construct another water treatment plant. That was key, but we do need access to this water. And as far as the other entities are concerned, all of them are south of us. So even if we do decide to take the water out of the bottom of the lake and we do decide to work with other partners, we still have to build that entire pipeline up to College Mesa. and we do decide to work with other partners, we still have to build that entire pipeline up to College Mesa. So the, the impact of those couple of entities working with us to the total cost of the project won't be as significant as that may sound. So those are, are two of my comments.
Counselor Youssef or Buell?
I would like to, I would like to add that we did talk at the I A B about financing this and the appropriateness and the back and forth of debt. And we asked actually that when you come to us, you bring us a, something that looks like that doesn't use it completely out of water fund issues. So I think what I'd like to say is that you're, what was so compelling, and I think we may be losing some of it because it's so late at night, but was the trend analysis, the what is happening? I mean, we can't look at where we are now, but where, what is it going to look like if we're following this trend? What will it look like 10 to 15 years from now? So what's really important to me is the resiliency and the sustainability of our community that we're building in. So I remember back in October saying to you, Allison, Allison, you got to give me more data and science and a, and a better reason. And I will say that you've, you've done that with the data and pulling in Mountain Studies Institute, F L C, other scientists to help you prepare that analysis. So is there anything else that needs to be said or can we go for a vote?
Let's have that vote.
Counselor Buell?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
No.
Mayor Proton Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Noseworthy?
Yes. Okay. We're not done yet. Yep. I think we need, excuse me. There's two items that I would like to bring up, if I may, just since we have council here. We had talked about, you had, Counselor Baxter, you raised the point of possibly having reassignments of the, the boards and commissions. But from my own view, I wanted to say, I didn't want to discuss it here. We are waiting to hear back the plan from staff, which may end up reducing some of these boards and, you know, and totally restructuring. So my, my own view, and I wanted to put that out, is that we should, we should kind of push on staff to come back with that plan. And then we can look at rearranging who serves as the liaison rather than having a study session for something that may be temporary.
Yes, yeah. I, I just wanted to clarify that unless there's a difference of opinion or if you want to discuss it, I would like to suggest that the other item, and please forgive me, I had, we had received items on the e-bikes and their locations. And it seems to me it's not real clear, or maybe it was just myself, that what, there were some differing recommendations, Tori's not here.
There are three different recommendations, actually. From each board has different recommendations.
So under, I, I know I could do it in two weeks under new business or we could also do it under council actions. So I'd like to ask if there's some support for having e-bikes brought into us for some discussion at some point in a timely manner.
Yeah.
Because of the difference from the boards.
Yes, yes.
All right, we leave it to staff to figure out when. Does anyone have anything that they need to report that they feel is important from their meetings? Or could it wait for two weeks?
It can wait.
Very good. Thank you all for a great day of work.